Order the joint meeting, the Planning Board, Land Use Committee and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. We have one member participating remotely, and as such, all votes will be taken via roll call. Let's begin with roll call, please.
Acting Chair Rappaport.
Here.
Sutherland.
Here.
Impemba.
Here.
Natola.
Here.
Gaffney.
Here.
LaRue.
Here.
After the roll call.
Now, Land Use Committee Chair Waddilla and Zoning Bylaw Review Committee Chair Ellis, please roll call the members of your committees that are here. You can't hear me. Let's see. All I can see is online, and we have Sally Willard, and we have Ed Parsons, and Shari Ellis present in the room. That's it for us at the moment. Oh, I didn't see you sitting there, Jeff. Jeff, I'm sorry. Jeff, you're fine. Okay. Feeling special over there, huh? Okay, let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
We need Chair Waddilla to... Who's from Land Use is here, I guess.
I'm sorry.
I think there's very many people from Land Use. So, they're here. They'll represent themselves.
Okay. Let's rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steph, do we need the members to say their name for the record, or if they find, if they have something to say, they'll state their name?
I think that we, I mean, for the meeting minutes, I think it would be helpful for people to state their names for the record.
Okay. Land Use folks, if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record.
Gary Mercia, Land Use.
Thank you.
ZY, Land Use.
Maude Pearson, Land Use.
Thank you. Is there anyone online?
If you're online, could you please just raise your hand?
From Land Use.
From Land Use. Okay, that is...
Ed Parsons.
CBRC.
Okay, that's all.
Thank you, everyone.
Yes. We also have Mark Donahue from CBRC, who just joined.
Great, thank you.
The Town of Burlington will be holding the March 7th, 2024 meeting as a hybrid meeting. The town mayor issued an executive order on March 12, 2020, authorizing remote meetings under General Law Section 38, General Law 38, Section 20, and extended by Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, including permitting remote meetings and participation until March 31st, 2025. Those seeking, as always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Note that while an option for remote attendance is being provided as a courtesy public, the meeting will not be suspended if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with a particular interest in any specific item on the agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to participate remotely may do so via the following. Townofberlingtonwebx.com is the URL. Our meeting number is (2347) 597-8867, and the meeting password is 1645. You can join us by phone and participate at (617) 315-0704. Members of the public looking to participate online, please raise your hand, and staff will send you a request to unmute yourselves at the appropriate time. We're being broadcast on the BCAT Government Channel. You can find it on Comcast 9, RCN 15, and Verizon 41. We're also streamed live via Facebook Live on the BCAT Government Facebook Channel.
Great, thank you. We'll start with a few continuances. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 1 N out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Item ends of public hearing petition to rezone property to the limited business BL District 252 Fox Hill Road submitted by the Burlington School Committee.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of March 21st, 2024, as requested by the petitioner in an email dated March 6, 2024.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Item 1 O out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
This discussion was for the Mall Road Mixed Use Innovation District, and the mixed rezoning initiative submitted by Melissa Tentaklas, Economic Development Director.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of April 4th, 2024.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Before we open the public hearing for town meeting warrant articles, I'd like to read the following statement as it relates to wireless communication. A proposed warrant article to update the Burlington Wireless Bylaw for January Town Meeting withdrawn by the Planning Board at the December 7th meeting. The intent of the warrant article was to update the existing section of the Burlington Wireless Bylaw to be in compliance with current day federal communications standards. After having further conversations between planning staff and the Planning Board, it was decided to withdraw this item from the town meeting warrant and placed on hold until a more comprehensive planning process can be conducted. Liz, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, so basically, we, it was decided to withdraw. We're actually going to be doing a more comprehensive planning study on this. We're going to do an RFP, hire an outside consultant, and kind of really take a more deep, a deeper look at it. So, I don't anticipate that happening until after September Town Meeting. So, those of you on Town Meeting who, you know, are concerned, just know that it's not, it's not an impending thing.
Thank you. This is the first time we're opening the public hearing on a town meeting items, so no votes will be taken this evening. This meeting is intended to be an opportunity for each petitioner to present the proposed zoning bylaw changes they're seeking to make. There'll be a short amount of time allotted for questions from the public, but the main purpose of tonight is to listen and formulate questions, which can be addressed at our next meeting on the 21st. Questions can also be sent to our staff at planning@berlincoln.org, or you can call the Planning Office at (781) 270-1645. The earlier you get your comments and questions in, the earlier they can be addressed. Please note that we do have a lot to discuss tonight. I will be setting a three-minute marker for folks that have something to say, so please take that into consideration. Please note that the Planning Board is not the final body to vote on the zoning amendments that will be discussed tonight. That will be on Town Meeting on May 13th. There is a list of all Town Meeting members with their contact information available for anyone who would like to take it, or if they'd like to email staff, we'd send that as well. If you not know which precinct you're in, there's also a map to go along with the list for those online. Again, please feel free to go to the Town Meeting page on berlincoln.org to find out more or contact staff. With that being said, I'm going to go through some rules for this evening. All speakers, please sign in in the front of the microphone and state your name for the record before you begin speaking. All speakers, again, will be given a strict three-minute maximum out of respect for everyone's time. Please keep your comments on topic and relevant to discussion that's occurring. If a previous speaker has stated an opinion that you agree with and do not wish to add on to, please refrain from speaking or repeating what has already been said. This is a hybrid meeting, and we appreciate all those attending, both online and in person. To ensure our proper order, members of the Planning Board, Land Use, and CBRC will speak first during the discussion. Once members from these committees have spoken, then I'll open the discussion to all members of the public. As this is a hybrid meeting, those in person will have the opportunity to speak first, then we'll go to those who are online. I will then choose speakers based off the order shown on the screen in front of me. All online attendees are muted upon entry, so if you wish to speak, please use the raise hand function, which can be found in the bottom control panel. Questions that are asked may be answered either by board members or planning staff. However, there may be certain questions that will require further research before responding. If this is the case, please follow up by emailing planning@berlincoln.org, as well as attending the next Planning Board meeting on March 21st, beginning at 6:30. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take Items 1A, 1B, 1C, 1D, 1E, 1F, 1G, 1H, and 1I together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Item A is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws, Article 3, districts by creating a new overlay district, MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, submitted by the Planning Board. Item B is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 12, 14, 16, and 18, Georgia Drive, submitted by the Planning Board. Item C is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 12, 14, and 16, Dover Road, submitted by the Planning Board. Item G is a public hearing petition to rezone the property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 24th Avenue, submitted by the Planning Board. Item E is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 0, 111, 121, 129, 131, 141, Middlesex Turnpike, submitted by the Planning Board. Item F is a public hearing petition to rezone property in the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 26 Beacon Street, submitted by the Planning Board. Item G is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 103, 105 Westgate Drive, submitted by the Planning Board. Item H is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 20 and 32 Second Ave, submitted by the Planning Board. Item I is a public hearing petition to rezone property to the MBTA Communities, multi-family overlay district, 1 Littlebrook Court, also submitted by the Planning Board.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I'm going to begin the discussion by first kind of giving an overview of the MBTA Communities law and what it is. There are a lot of rumors out there, and I want to be able to kind of set a level playing field for discussion at the outset. So, we're going to go over kind of what it is, and then what we have proposed to comply with the guidelines. So, and everybody can see my screen, hopefully. And this is all, for those of you that are here in the room, this is the slideshow. This is the printout that I have. So, this is... Oh, that screen isn't on. Thank you, Bob. If you could turn on the screen for the audience, that would be great. There's a remote, Caleb. Thank you. So, if you can't see in the audience, there is a timeline of events showing what has been going on. So, back in 2020, I believe, the Baker Administration passed this new set of laws that requires anything having to do with housing in the zoning bylaw, only needs a simple majority at Town Meeting. And then also, they passed the MBTA Communities law. So, what we have done is, we received a $70,000 grant, and we received that in November, and we solicited a consultant, which is VHB, and we opened up the first meeting of the MBTA Working Group, which was on January 31st. And those are a group of people who have a good background of zoning, but are from all different walks of life. So, we had members from Land Use, CBRC, Planning Board, we had members of the Chamber, we had outside people who were interested, and a lot of people fell on different sides of the coin on this. So, we started there, and this is the timeline. So, our goal is to have this voted on at May Town Meeting, because we, if there's anything that the state wants us to change, we will have September Town Meeting to fall back. If this is to be pushed to September Town Meeting, it is likely that we will have to call a special Town Meeting after that in order to finalize everything from the state. So, I don't want to do that to you guys, so this is what we are looking to do. So, basically, it was passed in 2020 by Charlie Baker. The law requires that all MBTA communities, there are 177, have one zoning district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, and that the density is 15 units an acre. As of right means that any proponent looking to build multifamily housing would still need to get a special, go through a site plan process with the Planning Board. So, it is, there is still scrutiny, and they will still have to adhere to our zoning bylaw. Why is the state doing this? Just to note, this was before the migrant crisis happened, and what was going on, and what I've understood to be the case, is that the Baker Administration was looking at the economics of the state, projections of it. There are a lot of people leaving the state. This is even before COVID. And the projections are that we are losing a lot of really talented people to other places in the country because the cost of living is so high, a lot of it due to the fact that we, our housing costs are so high because there just simply isn't enough. And so, he was looking at those projections, and that's when this kind of came into fruition. You know, I think that multifamily housing is an advantage. You guys have passed a lot of multifamily housing in the past, and so I just want to, you know, talk about that, how it's great to make walkable communities, transit-oriented communities provide lots of advantages, there are economic benefits, fewer drivers on the road, reduced traffic. It creates more interesting neighborhoods. So, the state has said, if you do not comply with this law, you will be ineligible for state funds, and a lot of very lucrative state funding. So, we have the Mass Works state funding, Local Capital Projects Fund, and Housing Choice Initiative. I was able to get money for our consultants to do this through the Housing Choice Initiative. We did our Blanchard Wheeler Road study using money from the Housing Choice Initiative. The information on the right are things that have come through the Mass Works program, and I think those of you that are up here, there is a printout of more information on the Mass Works programs that we have received funding on, and it is extremely high. I think it's like 15 million since 2009. Yeah, so the total was 16 million between 2019 and 2023. And I think those are, might just be for Planning Board members, and we'll have that online, but these are, a lot of these were public-private partnerships that, you know, through us getting these grants, we're able to, you know, develop Third Ave and Fourth Ave, and the Middlesex Turnpike redesign by the Summit, and the MWRA connection. And so, you know, I think, you know, these are really valuable sources of income for us, you know, in Town Hall, but also, they have great benefits to you guys because they get things done. So, here are some of our, some of the Mass Works grants that we've received, and that's on the next page. This is just, I got this from Nordblom. These are just some of the things that they have seen, that they've used. They've worked with us on Mass Works grants, so it's, we've definitely benefited from it, and losing that option really hampers our ability to do these big projects in town. So, back to MBTA Communities. So, what is Burlington? Burlington is an adjacent community. We don't have a commuter rail, we don't have rapid transit, we have bus lines. So, we don't have to locate our MBTA Communities zoning district anywhere. We can locate it wherever we want, which is a blessing and a curse because we have lots of options. And so, coming, so whittling it down wasn't always the easiest thing to do. So, everybody, as an adjacent community, we need to have a zoning district of 50 acres minimum, so that's less than 2% of our land area. So, think about it that way. And you have to, the minimum is that you have to have 15 dwelling units per acre by right. They can't be age-restricted, and you can't restrict them in any other way. They need to be for everybody. So, they need to meet fair housing laws. And again, the compliance deadline is the end of this year. So, what we're proposing is a zoning overlay district. So, the underlying zoning that's in place right now is going to stay the same, and those zoning rights are the same. This zoning district overlay will provide additional rights and additional abilities for the property owners where the overlay is going. So, we have two sub-districts. We have Subdistrict A, which I'm calling the Garden Apartment Subdistrict, and the Mixed Use Subdistrict. So, Subdistrict A, it's garden apartments, it's in areas that are already surrounded by a second-family residential. It's kind of the same as our existing Garden Apartment bylaw. It's a maximum of 20 units per acre, and so it's the same as our, as what we currently have, essentially. And it doesn't provide the property owners that we've put this overland, it doesn't provide them with additional development capacity. So, we're, so that, just stating that for now. The next district is the Mixed Use District. It's mostly on existing multifamily in the commercial areas of town. It is, you know, the same three-story with a 20 max dwelling units per acre, but the difference is here, is that I have, we've included a density bonus. So, one of the concerns that we've heard from the administration and economic development is that we don't want to lose all the commercial revenue that we might lose if we were to allow commercial developments to completely go away and put up housing. So, what I've proposed is by special permit, if a developer wants to allot 15% of their building to commercial space, they can have a density bonus, so they can go to 30 units per acre, and they can go up a story. Now, this does, this allows them to stay in keeping and probably less than what is existing in the district. So, we'll get to that. So, this is the proposed overlay district. Here she is. The yellow is the Garden Apartment District, and the red is the Mixed Use District. The Garden Apartment District, that includes Beacon Village, Beacon Woods, and also the Westgate Apartments. So, those are, so the units per acre of those, so we're proposing 20 units per acre, those are already above 20 units per acre. So, you know, Beacon Village is 22 units per acre, and Georgia Drive and that area, that's condos. So, unless every single person who lives there wants to sell out to a developer, it would, you know, they would be allowed to do that, but then the Maple, not Maple Ridge, the...
Beacon Village?
No, not Heritage. It's all the way at the edge.
Westgate?
Yes, thank you, Joe. Thank you. Westgate. There is, that's only a fraction of the full development, so I don't believe that they would be able to do additional development on there either. Number two is Heritage at Stone Ridge, and so we had to change the shape of that parcel because there is a section that is dedicated age-restricted, and we didn't want to negate that. So, we have taken that part out, so it's actually, it's not fully that whole parcel. The Subdistrict B is the Mixed Use. So, if you see on the map, number three is the Fourth Ave Apartments, the Lifetime Living Apartments. Number four is Huntington and Tremont, so those are near the buildings near Wegmans. And then number five, we're calling it the Staples Area, it's Staples North. So, it's the buildings that are from the Staples Building, in between Great Meadow Road and Middlesex Turnpike, all the way up until the two roads meet. So, Great Meadow Road and Middlesex Turnpike meet.
So, including the Staples?
Just the Staples Building, not the rest, just the Staples Building. And so, this, next, we're just going to kind of go over images of what that, what those are. So, we have Beacon Village, Georgia and Dover Drive, and then the Westgate Apartments. And so, that's Area 1, so you guys can be familiar with that. This is Heritage at Stone Ridge, and again, you can see up at the top, if you can see my mouse, that's the age-restricted area that is not being included. Area 3, we have the Lifetime Living Apartments, that's, they've already been built. Then we have Huntington and Tremont, so those are existing. And then last, these are the buildings that kind of were chosen, we're calling it the Staples Commercial Area. We chose this area, and the Working Group chose this area, correct me if I'm wrong, members of the Working Group, but it was kind of decided that we needed to show the state that we were, you know, acting in good faith with, you know, what the bylaw is trying, what the new law is trying to do. These are all properties that are kind of very much older, and I kind of have outlived their life and could use a revamp. And also, we felt that it wouldn't be a good place for people to live because you can walk to shopping, you could walk to work, you have this beautiful meadow that you, you know, you can take advantage of, and so there's a, you know, you can walk to a lot of places. So, that's kind of why we picked it. As far as what this could look like if it were to be built out, so this, if you did out the math, it would likely be kind of the same amount as a Huntington or Tremont, so one of those, but over all of these. So, it's not going to be, every single parcel has a huge high-rise. It's only four stories, each thing could be, if you did the density bonus. The other thing to know is there's like five different property owners here, so you would have to, you know, if you're going to do it all, you have to buy it all out. Now, one or two could do their own thing, but, you know, think about it that way. And then also, the topography is a little challenging here because it's, Great Meadow Road's down here, lower, Middlesex Turnpike is higher up, so a lot of these, in order to meet the parking requirements, you're probably going to have to do some structured parking here as well, so it's not, you know, it's not, it's not a guaranteed thing. The other thing we took into consideration is that the market right now for building housing and getting financing for this is tough right now, so, you know, we don't see this happening within the next, in the immediate future. The minute this passes, we're not going to see a huge high-rise come up. So, again, here is the timeline for what's going on, and I think that's it. So, I'm going to put it back to when it decides to work. I'm going to put it back to the map of the overlay district. Here we go. And I think that's all, Madam Chair, that I have for now.
Who wants to start? Anyone on the...
Who wants to start?
Please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd just like to comment that I was a member of this committee and doing a little bit of homework and looking at the presses those folks have as well. We're consistent with other towns of adjacent communities, what they're calling that is paper compliance, so it's already in place that you have this. There are other towns that are taking more of a hard stance in suing, being sued, or suing the state, so there's a lot of issues with regard to that. So, Burlington's in really good shape with what we've gone on here. And again, consistent with other towns like us are doing what we call a paper compliance and doing this to areas that we already have multifamily housing in. Does it expand it? Not too much from new housing, but, you know, we have programs in place that we're working on to put in multifamily housing where we want to put it in our timeline versus what the state is dictating. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So, you know, I've heard some concerns about folks, you know, opposing this, and I will, I will say, my concern is, we could approve this for, I mean, obviously, it goes to Town Meeting, and Town Meeting would vote. If this moves forward, we are complying, you know, with a paper compliance, but what does that mean? What's the next step? We're not necessarily adding new houses, new housing, except for that, you know, that small Staples kind of area. Other community, you know, we could let other communities fight the battle, and we would reap the benefits because anything, you know, that would be approved, you know, would follow suit for everyone else. I see both sides of this, and I think it's a real difficult issue, but I think if we have to comply per the law, I think this is the best means of doing it. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I have one question as far as, do the owners in that area have to agree to this?
I could answer that. So, I, my office did send out a personally signed letter stating to everybody, everybody on Georgia Drive, Dover Drive, all the property owners that we have in our assessor's database. And we sent that out to all of them, explaining to them what it is, telling them about our website, and inviting them to this meeting and all, and future meetings. And we've received one phone call from somebody who seemed to be concerned that the MBTA was going to put train tracks through his property, but we told him that they are not, and that this is what it is, and he seemed totally fine with it. So, that's all we've heard from others thus far, but we have sent them out. Statutorily, we don't need to get approval from property owners in order to rezone property, or Town Meeting doesn't. But the right thing to do...
Oh, whoa, whoa.
Sorry, Joe. I didn't...
Yeah, I mean, statutorily, you can rezone it, but they can sue you for land-taking, right?
Of course, of course.
You could do whatever you want, doesn't mean you're not going to find yourself in court.
That's, I guess...
Fighting a hundred... Fighting a hundred different battles, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
So, just to clarify that.
No, no, thank you. No, I appreciate it.
They made that, the mistake down in the Landlocked Parcel a lot of years ago.
Let's not, let's not let that happen.
Beginning of my time here in Burlington, and it was, you know, we got an appraisal of $800,000 and ended up costing us $20 million plus over, you know, not that it wasn't, you know, I mean, I'm in favor of having that property. The bottom line is, it was a court battle, and, you know, we ended up winning and losing at the same time, you know.
But this isn't taking the property from them. They would have to sell their property.
It's a taking.
For then a developer to...
No, it's tantamount to a taking, where you rezone someone's property.
Even though it's an overlay?
That's exactly what it is.
Even if it's an overlay?
Well, it's tantamount of a taking if you rezone their property.
Okay.
If you do an overlay.
We're not resuming it, though. Sorry, if I may?
No, please do.
Well, you said rezone.
Right, right. Yeah, I did it, yes, yes.
So if you're gonna rezone, that's a holding bargain, so.
But not out of its current use?
No, well, yeah, but not out of its current use, as long as you're giving them additional and not taking things away.
This is an overlay. If I said rezone...
So in other words, explain that they can still continue to use the use as it is?
A hundred percent.
And they can continue on if they want to adopt?
Correct.
The overlay, they can adopt the overlay. So how, so my question is, how does that impact, if they choose not to adopt, how does that impact our standing with the state?
Wait.
To get our, you know, to get our grants that is actually our money that we gave them in taxes.
So how do we ensure that the property owners...
Right, so if they don't buy into any of this, it doesn't matter, we just rezoned it and we're, and our hands are clean of it, as far as we're concerned?
I think so, yeah.
I think that's something we should look into, if you could ask the consultant.
I will look into it, but, yeah.
Can you, Caleb, if you can make note of that, please?
Yep, we can look into it. I'll talk to council and see what she says about it.
Because they put a timeline to rezone or to create the districts. Is there a timeline by which these have to be built, and if there's not, you know?
No.
No one's building anything. And that's, that was my point about we're complying right now.
I understand. Don't say nobody's building anything, because they could build something. It's not a question of no one's building anything. They could build on any of those properties. Is it likely they're gonna build on the other ones? Probably not at this point in time, doesn't mean they're not going to, but it's highly unlikely, it's unlikely with some of these. It's actually likely with some of them.
Yeah.
So it's likely that they will build. But my question is, if they don't build, is there a period of time by which, you know, you know, they look at that and say, well, this was done for paper purposes and not for reality purposes? And they come back to us and say, now you gotta fix it?
Madam Chairperson, could I speak? Everything I've read about this says that the state is requiring rezoning, but it's not requiring that that, that the building follows rezoning. There's no follow-up to say, has your zoning resulted in new apartment units? It's only a zoning requirement. So if we rezone all of these things and none of them get rebuilt according to this new overlay district requirements, there won't be any penalty for us. Because the bill is entirely to break down zoning restrictions and not on a requirement to actually build a certain number of units.
Thank you. Barbara?
Well, the previous speaker, I'm not sure who that was.
Couldn't tell. Was covering some of what I was going to say. I've been hearing a lot of concern from residents and from town meeting members that this is the first step, and that the next step will be that the state requiring that these are built out. And I think there are a couple of things people need to know. First of all, the, most of this is already multifamily housing, and there is no incentive to tear down that multifamily housing, to build new multifamily housing, because it doesn't actually give them any additional density. The main area that may become developed is that, which is along Middlesex Turnpike, which we've talked about. I don't see that as problematic. I think if it were to be built out, it would be at the discretion of the property owners. The state cannot come in and tell an individual property owner that they have to take advantage of this overlay and force them to build housing. But if it were to be built, because the property owners choose to build out the housing, it's a relatively small impact on the town, and as Liz said, it would be a very nice place for people to live. It could be done very well. So I think that this plan takes advantage of the fact that Burlington has done a really good job with multifamily housing, and that's why this is not such a heavy lift for us as it is for other towns. And there's very little risk in complying along, there's really no risk in complying with this law. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, just, I know the state can't force anyone to build the housing, but they certainly can come back. There's nothing saying they can't come back to us and say, look, what you did, we can read through exactly what you did, right? I mean, we're all saying it right here, it's not some secret that, you know, most of this, most of this, most of this rezoning or overlay is something that's basically a paper tiger. That's not, it's not ever gonna happen. So what makes you think the state is gonna approve that, to say, you know, it's one of my things, the other one is, the other one is that the...
We are. But right now, we've submitted to the state for comment.
Next thing is, nobody's gonna, the state can't force anyone to build, but they certainly can change the rules. Any point in time in the future, like they did with 40B. They put 40B out there, we complied, we're one of the only, what do we have, 12?
We're 13, we're like...
13, between 12 and 14 percent. We're one of the only communities in the state that has 13 percent, but yet, that means nothing to them. They come in and say, we're gonna now change your local zoning laws again, and we're gonna make you to absorb more housing. So in other words, they can change the rules whenever they wanna change the rules. You know, my thing is, my feeling on this is fundamentally, I just think it's wrong. They said, here's the rules, they changed the rules. And now they're saying, here's the rules, they have the ability to change the rules again. And the towns that are saying, we don't want to comply, are now having funds, their own tax dollars withheld from them. And not only that, their own tax dollars are being used to sue them, which is outrageous. In my opinion, it's outrageous. I mean, there's a lot of people probably agree with it, but I, I don't. I mean, I just think it's just so far-reaching. I feel like it needs to be challenged, and I, and I don't think that, I think even if we go forward and present a plan and do whatever, if there's a consortium of towns that, you know, cities and towns that want to challenge it, so that, you know, a line can be drawn going forward into the future, that, you know, you just can't come in and start telling everybody how they're gonna zone their towns, right?
I agree with you. So here's, here's my thought. You know, we submitted a preliminary plan, and that was on what date?
I think it was on Monday.
A Monday.
So the timeline for the state compliance is that you need to send in your preliminary plan so that we can get notes back from the state.
And so we'll get that back in June, right? The beginning of June?
Very latest.
It's the very latest. Town council has reviewed this as well, so it has gone through town council. Our consultants are doing this with multiple other communities. They have told us, we're not the only town that is doing this, and that it is not out of the ordinary, and it does comply to the letter of the law. So we will get those, those notes back. If there is any tweaks that need to be made, that is why I am pushing May as opposed to September.
So if we don't get comments back until after May town meeting, then we would have to either revise it, or what does that look like?
Right, yeah, so that means, so that means that we would have to make any tweaks at September.
So, I mean, I want to hear back from them before we really, I mean, I'm on the fence on this, I'm not gonna lie, you know? I think it's, and I'm sure other people have some comments that they will, they're gonna say, but, I mean, hopefully, we do get comments back before May town meeting. But I think this is a really big situation, and I don't believe, I mean, maybe I might get scorned by town meeting members, but if there's a special meeting that needs to happen because of this, I think it needs to happen.
I agree with that.
Joe, go ahead.
Gary Mercia, Precinct 3. Has the town looked at how this might impact the schools? I mean, we're talking about building like Fox Hill, and the current plan is to build a smaller school, so that's kind of counterproductive for this type of zoning, isn't it?
No, it's not. Because all of, so we have zoned 1,000 units since, I think it's like 2009, we have added 1,000 units of housing. From, I got all this data from the, from the school department. From those units that we have zoned, there are 63 students that have come into the Burlington Public Schools from 1,000 units.
What's the capacity of the elementary schools? Do we know that?
I'm not with the school department, I can't answer that for you. I do not know the answer to that. I can tell you how much, how many housing units we have, and where they are, and all that stuff, but I can't, I can't tell you, you know, how much each school is, but I can tell you that the data that I've seen is that the housing units that we have built have not produced this overwhelming amount of students in the school department, so.
Caleb, can you reach out to the school committee and find out what the capacity is for next meeting?
Yeah, because the, the village there, that's really, you know, the Memorial School I know is maxed out.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
You know what I mean? So then, for Beacon Village, you'd have to redistrict the town.
Yeah, we're not, this would not allow additional units at Beacon Village.
And to go off of what? Sorry, I'm done. Mr. Pembell was saying, they could executive order whatever they want at the end of the day. They could literally come down and say, well, there's a housing shortage, there's a state of emergency, you have to do this. If the owner's there, build it to 20, done. And there's nothing we could do if we don't do this.
Wait. And that's why I think, if you kind of look at the areas, four out of the five areas are already multifamily. They already, so if someone were to come in and replace those, the capacity isn't gonna be impacted like you think. And it, they're already multifamily, so it doesn't stop a developer from coming in, already buying that land and redoing it anyways. The main area that is going to see more of the impact is gonna be Area 5, which is that Staples Commercial Area.
What's Beacon Village density now?
It's like 22 units per acre, did we say?
Yeah, Beacon Village.
And we're zoning, we're zoning for 15 to 20.
It's 20, we're, it's gonna be zoned.
Just, what I was gonna say, just knowing the real estate market, let's say if we have an area on these maps that's five units per acre, financially, it's feasible for the guy to knock it down and put in 20.
Yes.
Correct.
Even at these rates, and because the rents are, and the pricing is so high, so.
So that's why I picked parcels that were above, at or above 20 units per acre.
So it, so it actually, it only regulates the number of units per acre, not the number of bedrooms per unit?
No, cannot, no.
No. So you can have, half of those could be one-bedroom units right now.
Sure.
And you could turn them into three-bedroom units or four-bedroom, you can turn them into whatever you want to turn them into, so.
That's part of the law, yeah.
There is potentially the, you know, there's maybe some incentive to some of the older buildings out there to rebuild those and increase the density tremendously, three times.
Because of the bedrooms, is that right?
Yeah, well, that's, and those, to your point, three bedrooms would be more families bringing children than, and taxing the school system, so it's, you know, I mean, just when you thought you had it all covered up, some, and pardon the expression, some lawyer is gonna come in and tell you, is gonna tell you how you don't have it all wrapped up, you know? Some, some bright lawyer, I should say.
All my constituents don't want it. Like, they'd ask, like my neighborhood across from Beacon Village, you ask any of them, what do we gain? More traffic? More impact on the town? Like, us as a neighborhood gain goose egg from this, other than doing what the state tells us to do. That's what my constituents are telling me, and that's all I'm saying. For the people that live here now, that, you know, have been here for a while, what's the benefit for us?
So the benefit for you is that the town can continue getting these masterworks grants and increasing your tax base with commercial projects, so the tax rates stay where they are.
Yeah, blackmail.
And we don't get sued, I mean...
Right, we're even blackmail, basically, to do it.
Well, I mean, they're the state, and so, you know, we are, I know this isn't popular, but we are legally subordinate to the state. So I just need, and as, like, as somebody who, you know, works for the town, like, I cannot advise you to defy the state law.
And I, and I want to make it clear that this has nothing to do, you guys are doing your job, because this is what the state told you guys to do. This has nothing, you know, you're doing your job, I appreciate that.
Go ahead.
Hi, ZY, I just want to say something. I was in the working group, and, so this is a state law, and it's pretty easy for us to comply. I don't think they really, you know, trying to get towns like us, because we're just an adjacent community, and probably other towns, we don't even have a bus station. And other towns, they probably hoping, you know, more, other towns like bringing in more housing. And with us, it's, we're already meet like most of, like, for 80 percent. So the risk of us is really small. And then if we don't comply, then we lose a lot. I think it's not just the state grant, also it affects our credit to the federal grant, too. I remember I was reading somewhere.
They, so, yeah, the state says that we could, they can probably, they, so they've listed grants that they, that we would be eligible for, but they also have a clause, these grants or others.
Right, so I think that the negative impact will be huge or much more severe if we don't comply. I think it's very easy for us to do it, you know, just, we really should just like, and they did a lot of work, we really should do this.
Thank you. Is there anyone present that, go ahead, Shari?
Thanks. Shari Ellis, so the bylaw review committee also was on the working group. So a couple of quick questions, and then I have a couple of comments. So the, the legal notices that were posted for this, did they list the actual addresses of all of the things in the overlay? So if a group or people wanted to change those addresses or do a different area, then the legal notice would have to be reposted? Yes, so that was a specific intent to do that?
No, that's what we would, I think that's what, that's what town council...
Noted to do.
Wanted us to do.
So what is posted is what's going forward to town meeting?
Thus.
With no changes.
Thus far, yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to make that clear. Another question I had was, if the intent of this and the intent of our master plan and all of our housing discussions are to make walkable communities, why would we not make all of these areas the mixed-use that you talk about, the ability to have mixed-use in it? We're taking communities that are far away from, you know, retail or restaurants and things, and we're not adding any of that into it for this Beacon Village and Westgate, whereas in if we did a mixed-use type of, you know, subsection, then a developer could come in and make that a walkable community.
Yes, so the first thing I would say is that we cannot require developers to make any, we can't, under a zone MBTA communities, we cannot require mixed-use buildings. That's number one. Number two, again, what is, I totally understand where you're coming from, Shari. What, the working group, we talked about, I think one of the main goals, and correct me if I'm wrong, members of the working group, was that, you know, we wanted to make this as palatable to town meeting as possible. And so, you know, so adding an area around Beacon Village that would, could be built out as more housing with mixed-use with the commercial first floor, didn't, I didn't, we did not believe that that would be palatable to town meeting. I would also say that we have, you know, I'm not gonna stay, stand here and say that this is a really great zoning law. I don't know of any planner in the state that thinks that this is the end-all be-all and this is gonna solve the housing crisis. I think that, you know, it's, I think it's what got through committee with the state. I think probably a planner did write it, and then as it went through the legislature, things happened. You know, I don't think this is really good planning. I think that to, to add more housing to this town, I think there needs to be a more nuanced approach with more thought, and this is kind of like putting a square peg in a round hole. And we do have initiatives coming up that we do want to bring to town meeting about, you know, adding, you know, mixed middle housing, so housing that is lower density, that families could move into, new families coming in. There's the Mall Road mixed-use rezoning that we're looking at, that would allow for housing in our existing commercial center to create a neighborhood. So I understand what you're saying. I don't believe that this is, you know, this isn't wonderful planning. This is a zoning requirement that the state is putting on us, it's not, it's not good planning, if that.
Thank you.
That being said, I have to speak out in opposition of what this plan is doing. I just feel like it's totally opposite of the intent of this law. From what I understand, what we talked about before at one of the meetings is, this plan, as it's presented, will net us about 120 some odd units. as it's presented, will net us about 120 some odd units. And I just think that that goes against the intent of the law, the paper compliance. I just feel that that is, that's not what we should be doing as a town. We're supposed to be increasing housing, that's the intent of this, and that's what I want to support. And as this stands, the way it is now, I can't support this.
Thank you. Who do we have online?
We have Bill Boyven, Carrie Donahue, and Maria O'Connor.
I'll have their hands raised. I know Bill Boyven's had it for the longest amount of time.
I believe so. Bill, would you mind?
There's a request to unmute Bill. It should be on your screen.
Okay, I got it. Thank you very much. This is Bill Boyven, Conservation Commission. The question I have, very short, is if there were to be development under this rule, let's say along Middlesex Turnpike, would existing bylaws and regulations apply and be enforceable like stormwater bylaws, wetland bylaws and regulations?
Absolutely, they need to comply with All of our zoning bylaw and general bylaws, it still needs to go through site plan review. So the conserva, as part of that, the Conservation Commission would be able to make comments on it, they would likely have to come to you. So, yes, they will have to adhere to all of our zoning bylaws, yes.
Good, that's comforting. And I would like to say, first of all, kudos to everybody who's been involved in this. It's a lot of work, obviously. And somewhat contrary to what Sheri just said, I think this, the efforts that you've done do meet the letter of the law and the spirit of the law. They were trying to create a certain density around transportation areas, and if we already have that density in some of these areas, then I think we're already meeting about 80%, as somebody said, of the, what the law is trying to establish. So we only need to adjust or possibly adjust with future development, the other 20%. So that's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Who was next?
I see Carrie Donahue next to my screen.
Go ahead, Carrie.
There should be requests on your screen.
Thank you. I'm Carrie Donahue, I'm the former chair of the Housing Partnership Committee in Burlington. And as many of you know in my day job, I work at Harvard University's Joint Center for Housing Studies, so I spend a lot of time thinking about these issues. I want to a little, make a few additional comments, but initially back up what Sheri said. The goal of the MBTA community's law is to address the housing shortage. It's not to increase density where we already have density. And what frustrates me about this proposal is that it is a paper proposal and a disingenuous attempt to comply with the spirit and the goal of the law. The messaging that I've heard for months, not just here but across the state, is that we don't actually have to build housing, but the reality is that we should be building housing, we need more housing, we have a housing shortage, and I would much rather have seen the working group come up with a proposal that meaningfully complied with the spirit and the goal of the law and to do our part to address the housing shortage. Someone commented about neighboring communities. Lexington, I want to acknowledge, approved a plan that rezoned 227 acres instead of the required 80. As a town, they recognize that they don't have enough housing, they have nowhere for seniors to downsize to, they have nowhere for young families to live, and they want to come back to the town they grew up in because single-family housing is so expensive. And they're going above and beyond to comply with this law, and I wish we were following their lead. I do think that Burlington runs the risk of the attorney general not accepting this plan. I'll be curious to hear the comments that come back because it is such a disingenuous plan. And just finally, to address a couple of the comments that have been made, we don't have 13% of portable housing in Burlington, we have 5% of portable housing. The 13% number, as we've debunked many times, includes market rate units, so we have 5% of portable housing. It is, as Liz noted, a myth that multifamily housing adds to the schools, single-family housing adds far more students to schools. And finally, the benefit to you, someone asked, what's the benefit to you? The benefit to you is that maybe your kids can move back to Burlington after college. Maybe you'll have more options to downsize to when you're ready to do so if we build more housing. Having more housing options and more diverse housing options in the long run is a benefit to the whole town.
Barbara, has her hand up?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Both Carrie and Sheri were saying, I agree that we need more housing. I just don't agree that this is the best vehicle to do it for Burlington. It is, it's been under discussion for years that we have a hole in our housing community. We have lots of apart, large-scale apartment buildings, we have lots of single-family homes, and what we're missing is that middle type of housing, townhouses, two families, three families. But this particular law does not really let us do what we want to do. It doesn't allow us to require an affordable component. It really, as Liz said, isn't really very well-written. But I wanted to assure you both and also everyone who's listening that the planning board and the planning staff are working on ways to create more housing in Burlington that make sense for the community and make sense for the people who will be living in them and make sense for the neighbors who will be living alongside the new housing. I don't want people to think that this proposal is what we're suggesting for a housing plan moving forward. That's not the case. There are many other plans in the works, some of which you've seen and some of which we have yet to present. This is not the only plan for new housing in Burlington.
Thank you, Barbara. Monty?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'd like to make some comments, but I also want to ask one small question. A small question is, in an Area 5, there is, between 2 and 3, there is a building that is not numbered, and I was wondering if, is there some reason for that?
No. Let me get to that slide so everybody can see where we are, and we will get there. I think it's, I don't know why, there are actually five different parcels in, wait.
There's one, I believe it's in between 1 and 2. I can pull it up on the zone map.
There's actually, I don't know why it's not, this came from our consultant sheet, these are the built, so the numbers correspond to the buildings on the right side, so you can get a visualization of what these buildings look like, that they're kind of older buildings that could use a revamp, that aren't getting the kind of, you know, they're not getting kind of tax revenue and tenants, and they could use a revamp. So there are actually five separate parcels on, in this area. So the numbers just correspond to the pictures.
Okay, so those five buildings are all part of it? There isn't an empty hole in the middle that isn't zoned that way?
No, there is, there's an extra, there's one weird, there is one random lot in there that is just part of parking, but no, there isn't.
Okay.
These are all kind of, there's six, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So the, I have two other comments. One which is, is that I disagree that this is a paper tiger. I think that the law was written with the idea that communities like Burlington that have worked hard to put in housing, multifamily housing, and we have a lot of that in Burlington, I think the law was written to reward those towns. And so we are being rewarded for our past efforts at putting in multifamily housing. If you look at other towns around the area, we have a lot more of that than other people do. And so the law was written so that communities like ours will not be penalized because, because we've already been working in the spirit of the law. The second thing is, is that the reason that this law was done is that we, as an older generation and at middle-aged generations, are in the midst of screwing over the younger generation. There is an outflow of people out of this state every year, and studies have shown that they are young couples who want to have a house and raise, have a family. And those are the people who are leaving Massachusetts. They're leaving the Massachusetts workforce, they have skills, they work, they're leaving Massachusetts because they can't find any housing. And so the younger generation is being forced out of Massachusetts by our older stuff. We live in houses, and we have zoning laws that protect us, and we say, huh, raise up the ladder, we don't need any of those people. And so there's people having to leave. So by saying things like what went on in Milton, what we're doing in the suburbs of Massachusetts is we are forcing younger people to leave the state because we have what we want and we don't want anybody else to have the opportunity to do what we got. So I really think that it's not really a moral case that the state is imposing something on us. The state is saying, we are having a generational conflict here, and we need to have some give in the stranglehold that the two older generations have on zoning in this state. And the two older generations, the middle-level generations and the older generation, are keeping young people out of the suburbs, and it's just not fair.
Thank you. John Cormier has been, if you want to approach the board, please.
No, I mean, we've had a lot of different statements, so I'm just reiterating, if there is something new we are adding, please comment. If it's something that's existing that's already set, or please refrain from adding. Mr. Cormier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I find it difficult with a three-minute type of window to say everything that I would like to say. First, it's, it's hard to hear some of the comments and some of the pushback that I've been hearing on this because I'm vehemently opposed to this law. I don't like anything about this law. I think it's, I think when you start talking about zoning, in my opinion, zoning belongs in the community. States should be nowhere, and I mean nowhere, in the area of zoning when it comes to the communities. The community should sit there and decide what they want in the character of their town or city. I moved to Burlington because Burlington, I grew up in Burlington. I was thrilled to be able to afford to purchase when I did. Couldn't afford Winchester, couldn't afford Lexington, I knew it, I had to move elsewhere in order to afford that. So did my siblings. The zoning belongs in the hands of the people of that community, the taxpayers, period. I don't trust the state, the state doesn't have a good track record as far as doing what they say and changing things that they want to. You can look back in history, we had to fight in order to roll back a sales tax for, what, 10 years? Supposed to be temporary. We had to fight tooth and nail to rescind the gas tax. State has a horrible, and I mean a horrible, track record. We should not be trusting the state to do anything in our community, period. Belongs in the hands of the taxpayers. And I don't agree that we should be blowing the doors off and adding all kinds of additional housing into this community. Every time you wind up doing something like that, you have unintended consequences and nobody thinks of that. They think, oh, I want my child to be able to afford a house in their own community, and that's great, that's admirable. And I would love to see my kids be able to purchase a home in the community they grew up in. The reality is, they won't, they can't. My parents couldn't, they grew up in Walden-Malden, could not afford to purchase there. So what did they do? They moved out to the suburbs. Wasn't ideal for them, but they did it because they had to do what they did. Government should never get involved in market-type-driven industries. Real estate is one of them. Stay the hell out. It's not good for government to sit there and try and force markets and industries. They'll screw it up every time, every day of the week, twice on Sundays. Let the market do what the market does best. It will adjust, it will create housing when housing is needed. We should not be forcing things on a community that doesn't necessarily need it or want it. Now, we've had other issues here in town, we had an overlay, we had a center overlay that was voted, it was voted by town meeting by a 60 to 40 vote, if I recall, because I've been on town meeting as a town meeting member. When it got to the town, we had a special election. It was straight down the middle, 50-50, half of the town didn't want it, but yet 60% of town meeting voted in favor of it. Agree, disagree on it. 10 years later, what's happened with downtown? Not much, certainly not what was promised. So I would say be very careful about supporting this. I don't like it. I don't like it at all, and I'll ask town meeting to not support this as well. I think Middleton did the right thing. Anytime you sit there and you sacrifice your soul for 30 pieces of silver with grant money, you're owned.
Thank you, sir.
State alone you. We shouldn't be doing it.
Thank you very much. Come on up. You can come next.
You just can't sit down. I'm Jack Kelly, town meeting member, Precinct 7. A lot of people don't like this law, but the fact it's there and they're imposing it on us, and there's fiscal penalties, we shouldn't take the work that the planning department has done and throw it out because the state might change it sometime down the road. If they do, we can unzone the overlay and walk out and get penalized then, it'd be the same penalty, but why should we lead the charge to lose money when we don't have to? The likelihood of a lot being done anytime soon is small. So I think we should go forward with what the planning department has put in because it's not very imposing upon us. And to try to stay within your three-minute criteria.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask a bunch of questions, and then you can answer at your leisure.
Thank you.
And the reason I'm asking some of these questions is, I've been asked by people around town, and there's a lot of misinformation. And so I would like the answers to come in this forum where people can watch it on TV. Liz has already addressed a couple. This is not 40B, it's not something that gets around our requirements of, you still have to go do a site plan. It still gets the Board of Health, Conservation to review it, that's fine. The one question, it is, it's 15 units, and as Joe pointed out, the size doesn't matter, but I think a four-bedroom versus a one-bedroom, the number of units you can get in there is kind of tight. The builders do find a way around it. The question that's being raised is, can they, as a right, do more than 15, or do we have a right to limit them to 15 per acre?
The zoning, as it's being proposed to town meeting, is 20 units an acre. Everything that we have in here that's existing housing is over 20 units per acre. So if a developer wanted to scrape and rebuild, they would have to either rebuild at exactly what they have now, whatever the units per acre are now, or they would be limited to 20 units per acre.
Do they have to comply with standard setbacks?
Yes.
Okay. Some of these are not within walking distance of public transportation, so how do we get parking in 20 units per acre? That can be problematic.
So these, so that is true. So we do not have to zone, we don't have to prove to the state that we can, they can be parked at 20 units per acre, we just have to zone that 20 units per acre can be built there with a site plan review. So if there isn't enough space to have parking and housing, then there will have to be less housing to accommodate the amount of parking.
So the required parking can take up space and they just get built, okay.
Yep.
Do any of these go towards the affordable housing?
We are proposing that, so our, we have an inclusionary zoning bylaw in town, it's 15%. If you're building four more units, 15% of your development needs to be, 15% needs to be affordable. And so I'm proposing that this will have that same affordability requirement that we require across the rest of the town.
I think we're casually using the word rezoning. We're not rezoning the land, the underlying zone stays the same, this is just an overlay.
Correct, thank you.
If the state, my understanding is, the original proposed law was a lot worse than that, and state reps fought back against it and watered it down to what it is now. So if the state tries to change it later, I expect those staying state reps to fight it. So I'm not terribly afraid of the state hitting us with something worse later on. And can we, at a later date, unzone the overlay?
Yes, town meeting has that power, yes.
So we can do that if the state comes down on us, and then we'd be out of compliance and penalized then, but why get penalized between now and then? Because the state might do something we don't like. So I think it's worth a try.
Thank you.
And we can back out of it.
Can I ask a question basically?
Hold on a second. Did you have any additional questions, Jack? Did you have any additional questions? Did you have any additional questions?
No, you weren't watching. You watched, so I kept going.
I was watching. I was just, you were making some valid new points. Go ahead.
So just a question. So that, when you said that we can unzone it afterwards, so once we zone it to that density residential, once we put the overlay, not zone it, once we put that overlay down and we try to take that overlay away, does that become a taking? So again, you know, then we're taking away their ability to build something that they now have the ability to build.
I'll talk to Town Council. That's, that's.
It is a taking. It's just a question of whether we get sued for it. It's not a question of, is it a taking? We're now, if we try to remove that, once we put it in place, we're now taking away an option for them to build residential housing in that zone. So that would come back and bite us.
If I may, Madam Chair, Joe, you and I had a disagreement on this once before about a taking, but if they have begun something, they are compliant, but not legal. They are legally compliant. We can't make them take it down. But if they built it, they have a right to keep it under the old zoning.
Yeah.
But if we remove the zoning and nobody has put anything forward to reserve that right under the overlay, they've lost it.
Well, no, because you're now taking.
I do not believe it's a taking.
You're now taking a right that you gave them. You gave them that right. Once that zoning overlay came in, you now gave them the legal right to build that housing. Now, if you want to come back in and take it away from them, and they say, ooh, wait a minute, that made my property more valuable.
That gives them something more than the underlying zoning allows, so they were given a temporary.
You're done. Hi.
Two lawyers having a fight.
I'm not giving you another three minutes, my friend. I appreciate your time. Mr. Parker?
This is why, that's why lawsuits are born, right? Because you've got two lawyers that disagree, so all of a sudden, the town gets sued.
Caleb, can you?
The bottom line is, you're defending yourself.
Can you make note that next time Mr. Kelly wants to come join us, he's going to be deducted three minutes?
Yes.
He could just wave and smile.
Okay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, Rick Parker, Precinct 7, also the Executive Director of the Burlington Area Chamber of Commerce, and I served on the Working Committee for the MBTA Communities. I promise to not go over anything that's been said previously. I'm not going to get into the politics of it. I do want to bring up the point that we are a town that relies on the commercial tax base heavily. Two-thirds of our revenues come from the commercial tax base. They're listening. Going forward, the office market, as we all know, is evolving. Housing is a major component of a business's decision on where to locate. When we talk about worker housing, we're not talking about, you know, the coal mines and worker housing, but we are talking about a community's openness and ability to work with companies to attract them and have worker affordable housing. We can define what affordable means to each one of us. I just want you to know that two-thirds shift is in jeopardy if we don't look at ways, and I know the Economic Development Department, working with the Planning Department, is working on ways to have mixed use in the commercial sectors that will allow housing as a component. We're not in a vacuum here. There are other communities that are very competitive and using this, the MBTA Communities, to build more housing and attract those businesses. So these empty parking lots that we have here now will eventually catch up with us. So being able to talk openly and be willing to listen to having additional housing, I think, is going to be critical for Burlington going forward. I just wanted to let you know the business community is listening to the tones and the intents of people, not only here, but in the business community as a whole. They're listening to see where the next communities are that are going to be open for the businesses of the future. That's all I have.
Two minutes flat. You're my new best friend.
I was giving back some of Jack's time.
I hate to keep on interrupting, but it's a point to make that I think, I think even people that are not fully on board with this plan are not against housing. I think this whole planning board has said, we've discussed the fact that we need to build housing in the town, but the housing should be built the way the town of Burlington wants it, where the town of Burlington wants it, when the town of Burlington wants it, and the type of housing that the town of Burlington wants. Not housing that's forced on us. We have areas that would be much more complementary to businesses if we could incorporate it into them, into the downtown center, and put some housing where they could walk to the stores and patronize the stores and be able to, you know, live in the communities where they're working and walk to the work versus, you know, living, again, in this, half of it's down and beacon. Well, those people aren't going to walk over to the, you know, to the center of town. They're not going to walk into, you know, to the Third Ave or to the district. So those are the things I think we're talking about. As a planning board, we should be planning when, how, and where we build these things, not having the state say, you're building it in these timeframes, or you're rezoning it in these timeframes, and this is how it's going to be done, and it's going to be, that's just wrong. It's just, you know, it's just overreach, as far as I'm concerned, from the state. But doesn't mean we're against housing. I think we've all discussed that we do need housing.
Agreed. Okay. So we have heard both sides of this. There are three people online, one person in. After that, I'm not taking any additional comments. We've been going for about an hour, almost an hour and a half. So we are also, I should note, not voting on this again this evening. We are, or planning staff is conducting information session next week at Grand View, which will provide details in the announcements. And again, please, 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 reach out to your Town Meeting members, contact, you know, folks here, so people at home can, you know, can voice their opinion if they're not present. I will. Perfect. Who is online?
Maria O'Connor has had her hand up for the longest time, so I'm going to request to unmute her first. There should be a request on your screen now, Maria.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So when I heard about this, I immediately said to myself, the state is overreaching, and I agree with Mr. Cormier, because we chose to live in Burlington because the quality of life, the green space. And thank God, back 200 years ago, Mr. Simon had the, to leave the town center, because otherwise, we would have had condominiums in the town center. And I think this law, if we decide not to go with it, is very punitive, because the governor is restricting funding if we don't agree, and I think that we lose the quality of life. And I'm in the midst, in our neighborhood, of fighting win heights two, which they want to put 24 units in an unbuildable, impossible to park or fee. So I think that the state should not tell the communities what to do, because what's the point of being a community if we are going to be the same? And like, I agree with other people. It's got nothing to do with not having, wanting people to live with us. There's a lot of buildings in Burlington that can be turned into condos and so forth. So I oppose because, A, I think it's punitive if we don't agree, and I think that we should really have some standards and not agree with the state on everything, because our lives are going to be ruined by the state, because two weeks from now, they can come back and say, we need to build something else, and then we have to comply, because they'll punish us by holding funds. So that's all I want to say, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Who's the next?
One more. We have Alex Ruffield. There are requests on mute on your screen now.
All right. This is the last comment for this session.
So yeah, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 5, and I would just like to point out a couple of things. First of all, well, the state makes the laws. That's kind of how it works, and then whatever they allow, we can change anything else we want. But I would also like to, so, you know, they're not likely to come back in two weeks and tell us to change something else, because they're going to have to go through the process of changing a law again, which they could theoretically do, but it would take months, if not years. But I'd also like to point out that, you know, the issue with housing is because there isn't enough of a free market on housing. Like, we, the state is actually telling the governments to back off and let a little more market in, because now these property developers will have more options as to what to do with their property, whether they want to buy that, you know, property developers can come and stop saying, this is a good spot for housing, we can buy it up and build housing. So that's what this law allows. The zoning has actually been getting in the way of markets. So if you want to leave it up to the free markets, you're better off supporting this because it's the state telling us to back off. That was my main point.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the Planning Board meeting of March 21, 2024.
Second.
Rapaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Empembala.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Aru.
Yes.
Thank you. Item J is a public hearing, petition to rezone property to the Limited Business BL District, 55 Center Street, submitted by the Burlington Select Board. Good evening.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a zoning change to request from the body, and it's certainly less complicated than the last topic you went over, but hopefully slightly less controversial. As everybody is aware, the town endeavors to build a new police station to replace the 100-year-old building that the police station is. I'm not here to talk about the conditions of the building and whatnot, but the zoning change specifically, what we are requesting is to rezone the open space currently known as the Sculpture Park, which is part of the Grand View Planned Development District, added on to the police station parcel.
And request funding from Town Meeting in May for a police station. So the first slide you have there, we are referring to what is known on Planned Development District map is Part A, and we are requesting, again, that that be zoned to BL, which is the same zoning that currently exists on the police station site. That will allow us to build a modern police station that will serve the town for the next 50 or more likely 80 years. We do understand that this open space is very loved in town, and the town had a lot of foresight to put it in there, and we do regret the loss of it. But our intention from the beginning is that we intend to use the least amount of this space as possible in building the station. And Liz, Caleb, can we get to the next slide?
Yep.
The next slide is just a survey that Liz had us do, and it's Lot C on this map here. And what we actually did was, we had the surveyor sort of drop the line from, I guess that's the west side of Sleeper Street, to a line that goes straight down to Center Street. To the right of that line is the Grand View Farms property. To the left of the line, Lot C, is where the Sculpture Park currently is. Caleb, if you could move to the next slide.
Yep.
There have been no decisions that have been made, certainly on what the building is going to be or where it will be sited on the site, but this is just a suggestion as to how the building and the parking may exist on that site. And again, knowing how important this open space is to the town, it's our intention to use a least amount of it as possible and to preserve as much of it as we can. Some of our thought process was that we would want to move that building to the corner, closest to the corner, Sears and Center Street, move it away from the residential neighborhood behind, move it as far away from the library, and again, really attempt to use the least amount of the Sculpture Park space as possible. The last slide, Caleb, is, and again, no decisions have been made. This parcel, the police station, will ultimately be in the town center overlay district, which will require a colonial-style building. And this is just, again, no decisions have been made on, they've worked up some space needs on the inside, but they do believe that a modern facility that can serve the town for many years could be built on this site. With that, Madam Chair, we're happy to answer any questions that committee members may have.
Thank you. Again, I just want to reiterate that this is not a discussion about the concept of the police station or whether or not anything is needed, what is needed at the police station. This is simply a discussion about rezoning these specific parcels, so I'd like to stick to that topic. That being said, staff, do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, just that this, so what is being requested is that section of the Sculpture Park is currently in the Grand View Farm Planned Development District as part of the land swap. And so what is being requested is that that section where the Sculpture Park is be rezoned to the Limited Business District, which is what the police station is currently zoned in. And so that is what is before us today.
Great. Thank you. Does any of the members of the Planning Board have anything that they'd like to? Go ahead, Bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and to staff. What is the size today of the Sculpture Park from an area standpoint, you know?
I do not know that off the top of my head. We can find out, though.
Barbara, would you know that?
I don't know if Barbara.
I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Okay.
Percentage of the Sculpture Park area, I guess I'd look apart, is going to be rezoned?
All of it? Or is it just a small portion that wants to be rezoned of the Sculpture Park? That'd be my questions. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Bill, the entire area would be the Area A, which would be the open space, the entirety of the open space portion of the Planned Development District. So noted by Area A on that.
So the whole field?
Yes.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Judging by aerial view, it looks like it takes some of the 25% of the parcel Sculpture Park.
Okay. Sure. Thank you, Madam Chair. So to add to the.
The entire parcel being rezoned, as opposed to the part that you need for the police station and parking. In other words, can there be some kind of further design study done before you ask for the rezoning? Why rezone the entire parcel if you don't need it?
Town Council had suggested that we do the whole parcel, because under the advertisement rules for Town Meeting, it would be easier to shrink the size that we needed, as opposed to you can't add to it, as we go through a lot in terms of what the advertisement is versus what goes to Town Meeting. From our perspective, the town is going to own both sides of the land either way. If this parcel is included with the police station, it'll be part of the site plan review, and I believe the Planning Board will have a lot of more input opportunity as to sort of how the thing lays out, once we have a fully designed project. So those are some of the thoughts that we had in mind. Again, our feasibility study is more of an old-fashioned one. Can the facility fit on the site? There's a lot of school activity going on. That's a very different feasibility study for, you know, $1.5 million as the state involvement, you know, really requires a higher level of design before the state commits. This does not include architectural drawings or anything like that. No decisions have been made in terms of where the building will fit on the site, but that was some of the thought process that we went through as we submitted this.
One more question? Sure. Have all the abutters been notified? For the apartments here, the Grand View Apartments, all the people on Sleeper Drive, I assume? Has there a butters?
Nope.
Okay. So do they need to be?
There is not anything stating that they need to be.
A rezoning?
A rezoning? That abutters don't need to be?
It's a rezoning.
It's not a rezoning. It's a proposal from the PDD.
It's a rezoning.
It's a rezoning. Yeah. The PDD is a zoning, yeah.
It's a rezoning. Do the abutters need to be notified?
I, they do, but we can, I mean, I think we had this conversation with the, with the Herb Chambers. Technically, they do not need to be notified, because this has been publicly advertised. Should they be notified, is a completely different animal. But is there a statute that they absolutely need to be? There is not, but is it best practice to notify them? Yes.
Paul, are you opposed to notifying them?
Well, I'm not opposed to all the abutters be notified.
I, I.
Not opposed to doing that, Chair.
Yeah, no, no, no.
That's just the standard practice, if it's not a legal practice. I thought a legal notice had to be made for rezoning.
Yes.
I think it is.
All right. So can we confirm with Town Council and figure out if it absolutely, if it's a legal thing, and even if it's not?
Yeah.
Paul, go ahead.
Yep, that's not a problem.
Okay. Monty? Thank you.
Hi. I'd like to know, if you have not finished the design, then you don't actually know that you need the space, right? So you're asking us to take a piece of open land and turn it in? So you're asking us to take a piece of open land and turn it into a parking lot before you know that you even need it as a parking lot?
Based upon all the information from the design firm, we do believe that we will need a portion of the Sculpture Park land. That's unavoidable. We do have, again, Caleb, can you mind getting to the rendering where they sort of dropped the building down?
I think it was this piece, this little part, yep.
So like I say, the intention is to use the least amount of the space as possible in order to have a successful project.
I guess I, is that a design of what it will look like or is it a design of what it is now or what is that picture of?
That is a potential design of what, a concept of what it could look like, with the blue being the building.
And where is the Sculpture Park in that design?
Down by the red line, correct.
And on that red line, there seems to be no parking there. It's still green.
That's our intention, yes.
So it's going to be green instead of being a Sculpture Park?
Yes. Again, we're not opposed to the Sculpture Park remaining out there, but the Sculpture Park has been notified that we may need that land and they're fully aware of what the plan is and they're willing to move the Sculpture Park if indeed we need to use that space.
And if you don't use that space, then it'll just be a lawn?
Like I say, we're happy, as long as we have an operational police station to last the next 50 to 80 years, we're happy to do whatever the town would like to do with the remaining space, absolutely.
Thank you.
David Villa, Precinct 1, Town Meeting Member. This is a bit of a Hobson choice, right? We get this. What's, I'm not really satisfied with vague here, right? This is a major decision for our town. Maybe we should do a bit more in the space of feasibility upfront, right? You talked about the schools, you know, okay, there's a lot of money that's involved with the state. But this is a lot of money involved with our town. Why don't we have the specific plan? As you go forward and say, we're going to take this land away from the intended purpose, you know, this long-drawn-out battle for the three-way land swap that was just ugly, right? And now we're just going to turn it into a parking lot.
Well, may I add to that, Dan, I'm not interrupting you, I just, but also went to a town-wide vote to have that property sit like it is right now.
Right, 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 and this is my point here, right? You know, we're sort of just stepping back, you know, well, you know, some of this is going to be parking lot. We can't really talk about how much because we don't quite know yet. Let's get to the point where we know what's going to be a parking lot and what's not going to be a parking lot. And maybe we should do that before town meeting, before we take a vote on this because the town, the whole town, came forward and said, we'd like to keep that space green. Okay, so if you're going to put pavement on the green, how much pavement are we going to put on that green? Okay? The other piece that I keep saying is what's the opportunity cost of that land, right? What are the other options out there? Can you build a structured parking garage between the police station and the library? Fix two problems with one solution for a little bit more money. And I understand money is tight, but over the course of the next 50 years, right? We will be happy that we had a solid solution rather than this kind of workaround that didn't, we didn't quite plan far enough ahead. So my plea is to get this plan done in a way that we can look at it at town meeting and be able to definitively make a decision about whether you want to put asphalt on something that we wanted green 25 years ago or so, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything, does anyone else have anything new to add to this discussion? This is a public hea-
Yeah, just, I mean, just to comment, and it's a little bit's been touched on each one of those, but I do think, as Monty had said, the cart's before the horse here. You don't rezone property before you have a project approved, like, then you've rezoned the property and it's completely changed the complexion of the downtown and the project's not even approved yet. With all due respect, I think you're putting the cart before the horse. And I do want to remind people, and I think Dan did as well, the town voted on this and the town has voted to preserve that site in their wisdom because it was one of the most historical sites in the town and we happen to be lucky enough to have it right on our town common. So now we're talking about rezoning that to building and parking structures, so, a parking lot, parking space, whatever. So I think this, I 100% believe in exactly what he had said. I don't think the plans have been fully vetted. I don't think every option's been vetted. I've heard some things being thrown out there recently about, and I'm not trying to get into, I know it's a zoning issue, but, you know, the Mount Hope, which is owned by the town of Burlington. And I don't know, what is there, a couple of years left on the lease or whatever it is? But, so, you know, is their ability to break the lease? But the bottom line is that has been thrown out there as another option. You know, there's a lot of options and I don't feel like they've been fully vetted. With all due respect, and I'm going to preface this whole thing by, I 100% believe that you need a new police facility. I think we need to look at a combined public safety building because I think there's a lot of synergies and over time, there'll be a lot of savings. There'd be a lot more efficiencies when you can make one central call and determine what the emergency is and it can be dispatched immediately from there. It becomes more efficient. That's where the towns are going. That's when I was on the Board of Selectmen, you know, many moons ago, from the time I was on there, we talked about that all the time in our strategy sessions, our yearly strategic planning sessions, that we, our goal should be to have a public safety building and that the synergies you can appreciate and not only the money savings, but the efficiencies that you can get by having that. And that's why when you look around, most of the cities and towns are doing that. They're finding a location to have a public safety building. And so I think, you know, I can look at, you can also look at this as a band, it's a bit of a Band-Aid when really we should be, this board, we should be planning. The Board of Selectmen, we should be planning these things out and not kind of reacting because we know they need a facility right now. Let's get the fastest and quickest and easiest way to do it. That's really not the way to be doing it, but to that point, I know we're not talking about that. I do feel like the cart is before the horse with the rezoning before we have a project that's been approved.
Madam Chair, may I just clarify a couple of points?
Please, and then as far as the comments, if there's something new to add, let's discuss it. If it's simply reiterating that the cart's before the horse, we've heard that point four times now.
I would just like to say, Joe, the reason why there's rezonings coming at this point is the town will be requesting funding for the project in May. Like I say, this is the traditional format that a town would traditionally request for, it was the way we did it for Fire Station 2, Public Works Facility. There comes a design concept prior to asking for the funding. You know, I think the way it's done that way is if you approve a million five for the funding of a significant design study and the town doesn't move forward, then you have a million, $1,500,000 worth of blueprints that you don't use. And I believe there was always a story with Marshall Simons Middle School back in the day that they did not get approved for the meeting and there was a lot of money advanced in advance.
But it's the same body that's going to be approving both.
I'm just saying, we're moving forward at this time because it's a two-thirds vote for zoning. It's a two-thirds vote for the funding of the project. We'll make it clear to town meeting that these two things go together. So, you know, if you're in favor of the funding for the, for the, for the police station, then you are in favor of the fun, you know, the zoning change, they go hand in hand. So ask the moderator to take them up. So I just wanted to clarify that that was, you know, that was the timing on this. And we do have a land study from 2010 that indicated that this is the most likely spot for a police station. I know from a law enforcement standpoint, we can have the chief address it, but the central location, we just don't feel it's that radical of an idea to think that we're going to replace the police station where it stands in a community that doesn't have a lot of land assets. I would just add that the fire station, Central Station, is probably 15 or 20 years down the road before the town will be looking to replace that. So the timing didn't really sync up for a joint facility. And again, I'll just say that I do recognize that the open space is very valuable to the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I'm Garrett Mercy, Precinct 3. I just, I agree that we, you know, the cart before the horse thing, but I don't want to see it get kicked down the road. Like, they need a police station. So, you know what I mean? It can't be six years when a whole school lease expires. It's got to be done sooner than later, in my opinion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm going to speak without microphones briefly because I have a question. Can you?
Chair, can you walk over if it would please? I'm friendly with Chair. I heard difference. Do you see yours?
Channing around here.
So I have been going to building committee meetings and it's clear that you cannot come up with plans without knowing whether or not that parcel is available to be able to expand onto. And so we could always decide it's not going to be necessary, but you can't come up with optimum plans unless it's an option to be able to use that space. And so that's really a question, is that accurate, my understanding of that?
That's my understanding as well, Ms. Bar, thank you.
I have one question, I just wanted to go, have we, I'm a little behind on this, but have we exhausted that there is no other place that's sufficient for the police department? That is the only place to put it in that they get exactly what they need? And, I mean, everyone is supporting, we want a new police department. But the question I haven't heard is, did we exhaust that so that they could build exactly what they need instead of trying to go around this land here and over there? They should get a state-of-the-art police department. And I feel like because you're trying to go on this little puzzle, are they going to get everything that they should get?
And we actually asked, I think in a past meeting, we asked for the study that, and the actual sites that they looked at, when, you know, when they narrowed it down to this being the best site. I thought we had asked for that and I don't think we ever received it.
I don't, I don't believe that we received that. Staff, did you receive anything along those lines?
I did receive something a while ago that I do believe I passed along, but I think it was a while ago.
All right, so if you can look through your emails and resend it to the planning board and if anyone in the audience would like a copy of whatever she's sending, please let staff know.
Just to answer Mr. Tola's question, in terms of land that the town owns, yes, this is the best available land that the town owns. Again, we were pretty pleased to find out that a new station could fit here. I think it was the select board's desire all along to have it replaced where it is here on the town campus. So in all honesty, once we were able to determine that it could fit here with the Sculpture Park, we did not, you know, commission a study to buy Papaginos and whatnot. And not to say that it's for sale or anything, but in terms of the land that the town actually owns and could move on, this was the best site.
Mr. Dottucci?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Dan Dottucci, Precinct 6. I forgot what I was going to say. This is a police station being replaced by a police station. This is a municipal building. The municipal buildings that we have in town are all owned by all of us. This is not private development. I don't have any problem when we're dealing with municipal buildings to grant a little bit of access, make it a little bit easier. It's not like private development where we want to make sure that everything is going to be in the best interest of the community. This is a building that's been going on for a long time. To say that we should start all over again and start looking for something that we've already been looking for. The town isn't that big. Most of our vacant property is the landlord parcel and we know that wouldn't fit over there. The chief likes what we're doing over here. He thinks it's a good fit for the current police department and the future of the police needs in the town of Burlington. You know, a few years back, quite a few years back, when they did the library, you know, there was a little mistake there. There was a wall that was not supposed to come down and it came up. I don't know all of the details of it, but because it's a municipal building, we went along with it and we finished the library and we did a good job. What we did at the Grand View over there, you know, we took the building where the tavern is right now. We needed to find a good use for the property and I think it was a good municipal use that the town can all share in. Well, this is the same thing here. This is another piece of property that's part of the Grand View property and I think that we're making the best use of this property by putting in a police station, which everybody knows we need. Town meeting already authorized the funding for this. Town meeting is going to vote and they're going to support this for sure, I guarantee that. But it would be nice to see if everybody in the community, all of you elected officials that you live in this community, that we get behind the police department. If the chief didn't think that this was a good fit for the police station today in the future, he wouldn't be here. He'd say, we're not going to do it. But let's go along and let's take some faith in the chief over here. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Chair, do you have something new to add? No, you don't.
I have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of March 21st, 2024.
Second.
Rapaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Empemba.
Yes.
Atola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue. Barbara.
We have, we have enough people.
Thank you.
Yes, I just forgot to tell you.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks. Moving on, item K is a public hearing petition to amend the Northwest Park Plan Development zoning bylaws use, Table Section 1.4.6, fast-order food establishments to permit a drive-thru used by special permits submitted by Nord Blum Development Company.
All right, I'm going to be sharing my screen. I have it from, for the petitioner that this, it's going to show up as many slides.
You guys want to be here because you don't want to be blocking the WebEx thing.
You guys are going to be showing that there's going to be a lot of slides, but they have promised that this will be under 10 minutes for the petition.
We don't have 10 minutes, they have five minutes.
Okay, we'll go. Good evening, for the record, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein, Todd Fremont Smith from the Nord Blum Company. They're here this evening to talk about the rezoning of a parcel of the existing development.
Thank you, Bob. Todd Fremont Smith, Nord Blum Company, I want to go home too, so we'll go very quickly.
Thank you.
If you can advance the slides.
Yep.
So Nord Blum Company, 65 years in Burlington. I'm just going to go back a little bit, just to, I've got my timer here, I'm going to start it. Fifth-generation company, 100 years old this year, very, very exciting. Next. Northwest Park, next. It's been evolving since the 1950s. The site, just for new town meeting members and those who don't know, is in yellow at the top of the screen. It's about 150 acres along Route 3. Next. So there've been various versions of Northwest Park. The first dates back to the 1950s where it was one of the first master-planned business parks in the United States. You just keep going, Caleb. You see the old cars, I love some of these old black and white photos. Version 2.0 was, when I started there back in, about 25 years ago, we started converting industrial buildings into office buildings during the internet age. So we took buildings that looked like this and we turned them into sort of flexi office buildings. Version 3.0 was about 20 years ago, 18 years ago, 2006, where we worked with the town to rezone for mixed juice. You just keep going, Caleb.
Okay.
And again, just some slides of what was the resulting third ad. We pre-invested in traffic, as staff has said earlier. We designed a Main Street, we built a Main Street, we designed a green, we built a green. And third ad today, we're very proud of it. It's one of the things that's making Northwest Park, Northwest Park's 100% full. All our businesses, you can keep going, Caleb, I'm sorry. We've got restaurants, we've been very careful about the restaurants we picked there, very careful about the retailers. We, at one point, we're talking to Target, we brought in Wegmans instead. It's just a, it's a great environment. I feel like it's going over a tipping point. It's got onsite grocery, we've got MBTA buses rolling through there. It's very walkable, you see people pushing baby carriages, walking dogs these days. And we're now focused on, we've been focused on the little pocket parks around the park to create more green spaces. We recently built this park on Fourth Avenue, a million dollars, outdoor park, public park. We're going to be adding pickleball in the spring, as this board knows. Working very hard to advance after several years of promises that public art we've purchased. Go back one, just, sorry. We, we're on track to purchase a public piece of art every year. So the first piece was this bronze frog, which kids are taking pictures with, it's really great. The whale comes from Rockport. This summer, probably June 1, we'll be installing the whale. And every year, we're going to be, we've got the family in this process of adding public art to the park. And, but it remains a business park. And so of the parcels in the park, you know, the vast majority are still office buildings or companies that make things. And as this board knows, we've got an additive manufacturing, 3D printing cluster, we've got a metal device cluster, and we've got a high-tech cluster. Tax base, every time we touch a parcel with this board, we're getting about a 300% increase in real estate taxes. I don't like saying that back in the office, but in front of this board, it's a wonderful thing. So we've got this, this is the park here, you guys know the aerial, a lot of interesting companies doing a lot of interesting things. So unlike multi-story suburban office parks, which are unamendatized and are going up and up and up in vacancy, and you do see some empty parking lots as well. up and up in vacancy, and you do see some empty parking lots, as Rick said earlier, around Burlington, it's very concerning. Northwest Park is sold out, and we continue to get companies growing there that want more space than we have. So what is the future? What's 4.0? As we look at this park, I want to begin a dialogue with this board. I've been doing this for about 20 years at Northwest Park. What is, you know, shame on us if given the ownership of this, of this family-owned park, given the long-term management of the planning board and the ZBRC and land use committees, we can't figure out a way to make this the coolest post-industrial work environment, live-work-play environment on the East Coast. So we're working with our architects to figure out what are the things that we're still missing. I do think there's a lot of undeveloped land at Northwest Park. We've got a lot of zonings still left, so we want to work with you to figure that out. Just, you just go through. So is it outdoor breweries, public music festivals, block parties? Are there ways to increase green space, create spaces between the buildings? And in particular, something we've talked to this board a long time about is connecting Third Ave, where there's a lot going on, down to Fourth Ave, where there's also now a lot going on. If you go down to Fourth Avenue at night, you have people living there at Lifetime Living, cars coming and going at Lifetime Fitness. Just click again. Here's Fourth Avenue and Plan View. And so how do we keep, how do we connect these? One more click. It's this connection we've talked to this board for a long time about, how do we make that connection? This is a diagram from 2007, showing the intent to connect. I don't think we need more roads. What we're talking about is more of a pedestrian greenway between Third and Fourth Ave. If you sort of look at some of these sharpies, don't focus so much on the form of the buildings. We do think more housing would be great at Northwest Park, but that's not what we're trying to indicate here, just more density, actually, and then connected by this green way. And the next slide shows, I believe, sort of a, I won't call it the missing middle because that's, that's a different thing, but this connection between Third and Fourth Avenue. Today, it's very much a sea of parking. I'm at five minutes. I'm going to get, I won't go beyond 10. If you go to the next one, Caleb. So that's looking from Lifetime Living north on this new sort of way. And then this is the new commons we built at Lifetime Living. And if you keep clicking, I took a walk one day up towards Third Avenue. This is where people are walking. They're walking towards Wegmans. It's just an ocean of parking. It's a parking lot that just has no character. And so as we continue to go through there, we're going to come to you with some plans to stitch that together. So this is the housing on Fourth Avenue. It is now open due to COVID. Our window manufacturer went out of business during COVID. We had some logistical hiccups during the pandemic. It's finally complete. It opened about six months late. We're in lease-up now. We do think it'll be fully stabilized by, you can just keep going, Caleb. Thank you. It's a very beautiful building. If anyone hasn't been in the building, we're happy to show it to you. But it's a place where I would personally live. I'm trying to get Bob to live there. Just hold there for a second. And then for the town meeting discussion, we always intended that there would be, this is a sketch from the original permitting of the Lifetime Living. Get my time. We always intended that a building be on this corner. This is a sketch from the original site plan. The planning board at that time asked us to come back basically when we knew what it would be and who it would be. We think we're getting closer to that. This is an image of the existing completed Lifetime Living with Lifetime Fitness Beyond, and then just a sketch of what we would like to see there at some point in the future. I would say that this is not something that we're in a hurry to finalize. So I know just through your excellent staff, there have been some concerns about traffic and about location, and we always want to be good partners. And so again, we're open to some brief comments and just to know that sometimes I'm in a hurry, like right now, and sometimes I'm not in a hurry. And this, this is not such a hurry project that we'd like to get it right with you and when it's appropriate.
So I'm going to, I'm going to stop you for a second.
Seven minutes. That was good.
Okay. So I appreciate the history, and I love everything that Nord Blum has done for the community. What we're going to talk about is this amendment where you're looking for a drive-through. I'm going to touch on a couple of points. We keep talking about walking, 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 walking. This is a drive-through. That's not walking. So I mean, kind of contradictory. We asked you to come back when you knew what it was going to be and where it was going to be and when it was going to be, and you don't have that. So I feel like we're compensating this evening, putting the cart before the horse. And you're not in a hurry. So I don't know why we're talking about this.
Well, maybe I can answer the question, Madam Chair. The purpose of the presentation, we wanted to drive across the concept that we don't do anything over there without fully thinking it through and vetting it and making sure it fits with the overall scheme. And we wanted to make sure that we showed the history, that it works together, that we're not, we're not doing something because someone knocks at the door and says, we want to do it. We want to say, does that fit with what is the vision? And while we're not at liberty at this point to indicate who the potential user would be because of ongoing negotiations, but it is someone that would be attractive and we feel would fit in. With respect to the drive-through, that is a component of it. We don't know exactly how it's going to shake out, but it appears that all of the users that have spoken to the applicant have indicated that they would like to have that option to have a drive-through. And that would have to go through the planning board process and be vetted and traffic and circulation. But that being said, listening to the agenda tonight and what's been discussed.
Yeah, and we are, we are in discussions with a very high-end cafe operator. I do think this location is a, is a good location for it. We do think that somewhere in Northwest Park would be great to have a drive-through. There are drive-throughs up and down this corridor. There are often mothers with children who don't want to get out of the car. There are people in the park who could stay in the park even if they're driving. So we don't think it's a bad use. I do, I have heard from staff that there are concerns about traffic. One of my concerns is that because the user is so good, that it could be too successful in this location. In other words, the zoning allows for a bank here with a drive-through. It does not allow for food with a drive-through. And one of the questions we've been asking ourselves is, you know, would something of a quieter nature be better here from a traffic vantage? So and as I said, we're not in a hurry yet. The traffic concerns came up recently. And so if this board would prefer, you know, we could, we could push this off to a future town meeting. But we do think that a drive-through in Northwest Park at some location, and we'd like to work with you on that, could be, could be beneficial.
I mean, I'm going to speak for myself and not the board, but I think that that would be better served. You know, you still have the ability to add more apartments back there.
Yep.
The traffic as it is, isn't it, you know, as it stands right now, without that development is already an issue. And the police, the Burlington Police have already voiced that concern as well. And in discussions with them about this, they've voiced their concerns. But I'm not going to take the floor up the entire night. So staff, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
Not, nothing that hasn't already been stated. Again, you know, the, the traffic and circulation around this area has been a concern to the police department. We've made note of it. We do, you know, with economic development and all the planning that we're trying to do, we're really trying to promote Burlington as a more walkable place as opposed to our 1950s auto-oriented ways of life. We're thinking about other, other transportation ways of doing things. And just generally, we do the concern about, you know, this area isn't fully kind of leased out, isn't fully built out. And so, you know, we, you know, we are pro-business, and you know, we want, we want somebody to go in there that is successful. But I think that a super-successful drive-through, we do have concerns about that.
Thank you. Does anyone on the, on the planning board have any comments, statements, questions? Sherri, where do you get?
Question. The concerns from the police department about traffic, is it the amount of traffic or the control of the traffic?
I.
It's going to be, so I talked to the, to the traffic safety officer about this, that already right there, right in front of both Lifetime Living and Lifetime Fitness, that that's a, a spot where they have concerns as it is right now.
Is the traffic controlled with the exit of entry?
Yep.
Not the amount of traffic?
Well, it's a combination of because of that, then the amount of traffic that queues up there, and a use like this that specifically makes queues for people waiting, that that is of major concern, where that's already a partial issue there, and adding a use that is just about queuing of cars. And again, as we're saying, if it's very successful, it's going to be even more queuing, that that's going to cause even more concerns about the vehicular use there. And that's, that's what the traffic safety officer specifically outlined as his concern with, with reading this amendment.
So I guess my comment would be that if this, you're putting it right now in that little parcel, because that was always kind of the intent and whatever. But if this was more of a restaurant or cafe or whatever, and it was further back in the park, not on the main.
That's what I'm starting, that's what we're starting to.
Wouldn't be seen, and therefore it wouldn't, it would still be a go-to because people will find it a success, but it will take it off of the main drag. It will also, and again, if there's some potential light or some kind of mechanism at that intersection that's the problem right now.
Yeah.
With the queuing, the light control, whatever.
There is a light that put that.
Well, there might, but the timing of that light is walkable, and then you also have the entrance at the actual fitness facility, which left turns and right turns and all of that kind of stuff. So I'm not, in my, I drive it a lot, I see it a lot. The amount of traffic isn't the problem. It is the queuing and the lights and the left turns and all of that that creates this backup.
Sherri, I think that there's, that area hasn't been fully developed. So if they're going to have another, I think they have the rights to want another 120 units back there. So there is going to be more traffic. We, we're not going to know what the traffic's going to look like, the true traffic, for at least another two years.
Right. But I was thinking of now, that if that wasn't on the main.
I think we always intended it to be a bank pad. Banks are so boring that we went out and looked for a cafe. And then we found a cafe that was so exciting that we started to worry, we started to worry that, you know, we tried to listen to staff comments, and in this case, it started to ricochet around my office that, so we're, we're happy to take this a little slower and maybe back off this and work with the board and try to find the right location.
I.
You have a lot going on too, anyway, at town meeting, so.
We wanted to take a summer vacation. It sounds like you could be.
We do want exciting cafes.
Yes, we do. Agreed.
I'll come back to you because.
Agreed. Monte?
Just a comment that I think that your slideshow right up until that last slide was the whole argument for not having a drive-in right there.
Exactly.
Because the whole rest of the emphasis of what you're doing there goes against the idea of plugging a drive-in into a heavily-used spot. You have a very large apartment building right next to it. You have this huge Lifetime thing with lots and lots of people coming out. You would have a tremendous amount of foot traffic in any kind of small cafe thing there without any kind of drive-in, and it would be a place that you could use as a building place to make Fourth Avenue more of like Third Avenue. So I think that it would be counterproductive to what you're trying to do to have it be a drive-in. Because if you make it a drive-in, then people aren't going to walk there. You know, wherever, wherever there are cars and things, people stay away.
Yeah. Okay.
Thank you. Barbara, you had your hand up. You took it down.
Yeah, I decided that my question would.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else online that's comments concerning?
I see Melissa, I think that's Melissa Tintoclas raising her hand.
Melissa? Melissa? Yeah, Melissa Tintoclas, Economic Development. It says I'm unmuted. Can you hear me? Yes. Yeah, Melissa Tintoclas, Economic Development. I just wanted to kind of share a couple of thoughts, and I think Monte captured a lot of some of the thinking. From the economic development perspective, it has not been, you know, the fact that we want commercial and the activation and exciting cafe. I think we've been concerned about the form of a drive-through, which would be kind of perpetuating the kind of the car dependency and speaking to what the PDD has been about, about the walkability and the connections throughout. And what we've heard from the commercial entities at tenant there, they have really valued the walkability. And when drive-throughs come in, there's a lot of curb cuts, there's a lot of actual pedestrian safety issues that come to mind. And I don't know if those have been thought out with regard to, you know, as, as well as the vehicle traffic, but I know that has had a lot of attention. I'm just thinking also with the real kind of environment for the pedestrian, that human-scale piece.
Great. Thank you. Is there anyone else that has anything new to add?
Seeing no one.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of March 21st, 2024.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
N'tola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Larue.
Yes.
Six.
Madam Chair, we'll notify the staff if we pull it on.
Great. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Have a good night. All right, let's move on.
Item L, I was, a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws to Article 5 General Regulations to update parking requirements submitted by the planning board.
Oh, I'll share it. Oh, no, I can't share it because our IT department.
Okay. Which, what do you wish?
It's in the.
Do you want me to show the amendment itself?
No, let's go through the presentation first.
Okay. Does it mean in here?
It's in, no, I put it in the staff report folder with all the stuff.
Okay.
I put it in.
24.
Sorry, guys.
Wait, is this use table?
Nope, this one is generous.
Parking update, this?
Yeah, it's a PowerPoint. I'm sorry, everyone. My computer, nope, it's back. Go back to, yeah, and then it's parking modernization. Caleb, thank you. I'm sorry for wasting everybody's time. When I switch buildings, it kicks me off the network. I don't know why.
So next.
So this is, I know that the planning board has seen this. We started talking about it back in, it was submitted back in October. We talked about it in November, have continued talking about it. The point of this is to modernize our entire parking bylaw, which is Section 7 of our zoning bylaw. So next, Caleb. It decides it wants to go. It decides it wants to go. So why are we doing this? What changes are being proposed? And what's the status of the article? And then we're going to look at what has been updated. So again, we're looking to modernize and streamline our parking. We're looking at ways to reduce the amount of required impervious, amount of impervious surface for climate resiliency. We want to make this section of the bylaw easy to use for both us internally and anybody that is looking to improve their property. And we want to formalize some standards that the planning board is always looking for of property owners, and so formalizing those. Next, please. So what are we proposing to do? So we are modernizing our parking, number parking space requirements. We, we looked at the ITE Institute of Traffic Engineers Parking Generation Manual. That was our first iteration of the bylaw, if you guys remember. And through working with our partners at the Burlington Neighbor Chamber of Commerce and people in town, we have updated that to a, you know, something that I feel like myself and, and the chamber that we can, we can work with, that it makes sense for them from a teneting perspective and from their needs, but it also allows them, you know, flexibility that if they want to not, not pave as much, they don't have to. So we are promoting parking reduction methods. So, you know, allowing or promoting off-site shared parking. You know, you can reduce your amount of parking that you have to build if you have a car share program. You can utilize on-street parking to count towards your parking. If you're within a certain number of feet of public transportation, you can reduce your number of parking spaces. And if you have the land and you don't think you need to build it out, you can put parking in reserve, and the planning board has done that in the past. We've added design standards for off-street, for parking lots, off-street parking facilities, including landscape requirements with curbing and drainage, and design standards for structured parking facilities, including fenestration and facade elements, and then updated our landscaping requirements for all commercial properties. Caleb?
Yep. It's not working.
It's not working. Yeah, so this is, this is a saga. This is a long saga of this article, but we're going to persevere. So where we are, on March 1st, I received kind of final comments from the chamber. So in January, we brought this to town meeting and gave town meeting an overview of kind of the status of it. We, we had meetings with town council to discuss final edits. Town council reviewed what the chamber had proposed. Some of them, she said, okay, this makes sense, these are great comments. Some of them, she's like, well, we don't, you don't really need to do that because of X, Y, and Z. So, you know, we, we used our judgment, you know, definitely erring on the side of, if the chamber really thinks they need this, then we, you know, we can, we can work with them. And we just received final comments from the Chamber of Commerce. They weren't that much different, just small technical things. They seem to be comfortable with the new parking requirements, making sure that, you know, the landscape requirements will work. But we, I think we're in a very good place. And, you know, I've met with them last, I don't know, last Friday I met with them, and everybody, you know, they do, they have all said to me, they said, you know, Liz, we're completely in support of this, this plan, what you're doing. These are the changes we want, and, you know, I think we've really, it's been a really good exercise, and I think we've really met in the middle to really come up with something that is really going to be great for the town, but also will make sure that the businesses in town can remain really viable. So, that's all.
So, so we've seen this table before.
No.
Are there any changes that have been, that have been made since the last meeting where we reviewed this?
Um, so.
Let's go over those.
Sure, so Caleb.
I wonder if the bylaw.
And I might just like steal your computer.
I don't want to rework the wheel here.
No, I don't either.
We still have, we still have a little bit of a hefty agenda.
I don't really want to either.
Well, maybe what we can do, instead of going over here, I'd like all the comments that you got from the chamber and which ones you included, and maybe spend a little time, I can take a look at that till next meeting.
Yeah, so the latest ones I got.
That works well.
All of them, actually.
Yeah, so, so I, yep, so I can send you the latest ones, because I think I, but.
And which ones you put in, which ones you didn't?
Yep, exactly. Yeah, so I think that one of the things that.
And all the ones that the chamber had asked for, and then you can say which ones you didn't.
Yeah, and I, yeah, and I can, I think, least it meets comments, town council comments, I've sent those to some people, I'll make sure that you get those. But this is kind of, we did a lot of changes here, I'm not going to go through all the changes, not a lot of changes, but we kind of met in the middle.
What were the comments that initiated the changes, I guess?
Yeah, and we can, we can give us that.
And then we can look at this, because, I mean, to go through each one is.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, yeah, so I can get all of that to you, I'll make it pretty, put it in a PowerPoint, also get it to you beforehand.
Okay.
But that's kind of overview of, of the changes. They are all, there's nothing substantial, it's a lot of process. So the, the chamber said, well, you know, what exactly, they basically want to know with certainty what things are going to be. So there was questions about, so there's, in here, it's, the planning board can make a finding that you can go 10% above or 10% below your parking requirements. And, you know, they wanted more clarification on that, which we provided.
Okay.
If you go above that, you need to get a special permit to go above or below. They wanted more clarification on that, we provided it. So things of that nature. But that can be more specific at a later date.
That would be great.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Does anyone have any questions?
Can you just forward that?
Please.
Absolutely, yes, yes, yes. I want to give.
Please make sure that goes to all of the participating boards this evening.
Yeah, and so you and Dave and I will. Love it.
Great. Monti?
Was there any discussion in here of a park and ride type of operation with vans or buses or anything like that?
Not specifically that, but I think that, you know, as one of the items that a, a property owner could propose, has, you know, a reason to reduce the amount of parking that they, that they need to build, I think that that would be a reasonable request of the board to say, hey, you know, we need to build, it says 100 spaces, but we are bringing this. A lot of people that came in on this ride share program, can we build 75 of them? You know what I mean? So that's kind of the idea, is that if a developer can come up with a plan to say, this is why we don't need the amount of parking, the planning board can.
Great.
So is there any, any sense from the business community that if there were parking lots or parking garages at different ends of, we have a long, thin business district, and it seems to me that a shuttle running through it ought to be something that would be helpful for the businesses at lunchtime, and it would be helpful for people just kind of parking there and then getting on the shuttle and running them around the district. Is anybody interested in doing something like that?
So, that is the topic that Rick Parker has been talking about a lot with the chamber. We talk with Middlesex III Coalition, which is our transportation management association that we're a part of. And there have been different iterations, it's hard to get buy-in. From what I understand, you need at least $300,000 to do a pilot of something like that. It's not, because I think a lot of it is the insurance. You have to, the driver and the insurance is crazy. But that's what I've been told by people in the industry, that it's expensive to start one of, one of these shuttles going. But if you're interested, I can give you more information on, on that type of thing. And Rick Parker is also a go-to on that.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Jack?
You have one minute, you've already been deducted two from your last.
You're going to get ejected.
So, what do they call that, retroactive?
Uh-uh. Postback though. Thirty seconds are gone.
I've been hearing different chatter, people saying, what the reasons of this? I've heard it's designed to change trips, it's designed to reduce asphalt. Just be clear to the non-developer or the non-planner what the goal is, whatever that is.
Um, so.
You don't have to tell me, just be prepared to do it.
Yes, I want to go back to my other slide, because I think that that is kind of the, if I could.
I'll get it back higher.
But it is, it's all of those things.
Well, you have 15 seconds left to later on?
No.
It's, that's, it's, it's all of those things. It's reduce, it's providing the talent, providing developers with the ability to reduce the amount of asphalt, reduce the heat island effect. The commercial area of this town, you can feel it when you go from here down to get a sandwich at Press Cafe. It is extremely, you can tell that, especially in the summer, it's crazy hot where, where Press Cafe is versus here because of the heat island effect. We want to be able to, you know, if you're a smaller business owner, a lawn, a lawn 3A, you know, and you need, you, you have, you have limited space for parking that you can prove that you don't need all of it, we want to make it easier for people to read this. This hasn't been updated in years, and so making, making it easily readable for, you know, anybody on town meeting to say, oh, if I open this type of business, I need to build this amount of parking. Okay, in a table, as opposed to having to read everything out. And then just more flexibility. Trips, yeah. And also, I mean, it, well, I mean, reducing trips because you have shared parking. I, I will have, I'll look into it. I don't, I mean.
I don't see how that does trips.
No.
I think we have one person online, and then we'll wrap this up. Melissa, did you have anything to add?
Send your requests on mute.
Oh, thank you. This is Melissa, Economic Development Director. I just wanted to say, been part of the, you know, outreach and process with Liz through the chamber, and, you know, in general, I feel like there's been, you know, it's, we, it's been an iterative process, but I think we have a strong support from the business community at this point on this. And I feel like there's just a couple of things, I think, that were mentioned about the shuttle that I would also happily speak to at a different point in time, but, because we've done some research on that, Monti.
Great, thank you. Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of March 21st, 2024.
Second.
Uh, yes. Rappaport. Sutherland.
Yes.
And Pemba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Larue.
Can I ask a question?
Of course.
Why can't we just vote on this tonight? Why are we continuing again? We've been over and over this, aren't we ready to go?
Because Bill had asked what the questions were for the chamber, and.
That's right. Can I have your vote now?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on. Item M is a public hearing petition to amend the zoning bylaws by updating and modernizing Article 2, Definitions in Article 4, Section 4.2.0, Principal Use Regulations Schedule Submitted by the Planning Board. Again, this is another table that we've gone through, kind of tables.
Yep, we love it. You guys love listening.
We love it so much that we could.
Yeah, has anything changed?
What has changed, I guess?
So, not much. The only thing that I wanted to direct everybody's attention to, which you have in front of you, and we can try and bring up, is that I've tried to simplify the use table by getting rid, by hiding all of the cells that aren't really being changed. So all the cells that, all of the things in the table that are going from, you know, a really big chunk of text to one word, and then the rest, that chunk of text is going into the definitions, that is not here. These are new definitions, so.
But new since we've seen them last?
No, these are new definitions and items that are being consolidated.
Okay, okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
What's all the missing numbers?
The missing numbers are still there.
Oh, so it's not like you're skipping, right?
I'm not skipping them, for, for purposes of discussion.
So they're not changing, you're just left out.
Yeah, they're not changing, I'm just leaving that, these are the ones that I want, I want people to review, because from before, there was questions about consolidated uses, and then also, you know, reviewing the, kind of where these uses are allowed. And so that's why I tried to simplify the table for everybody, because looking at that huge table, your eyes crossed and you couldn't, my, my eyes crossed.
Can you email all of the boards the final version without the, the memos, you know, without all the changes? So if you were to take off like the, yeah.
The red line out, too.
Take the red lines out.
Yes, it was.
Can you, can you send a final version and the red line version to everybody on the boards?
Yes.
That way we can, you know, if there's anything that needs to be discussed, because I think, you know, to her point, it kind of gets a little confusing.
Yeah.
Monti, did you have something you want to add?
Yeah, I have, we discussed this last night at the Land Use Committee, and we were strongly leaning towards the idea that you folks are bringing an awful lot of stuff to town meeting in May, when town meeting is going to go through its whole budget also. And I don't know how receptive town meeting is going to be to all of this stuff you're bringing in. If I were you, I would prioritize what needs to be done in May and what needs to be done, what could be, what could wait until September? Because, you know, we've had a discussion of this, and it's 8:30, right? And so you can imagine how long these discussions would take at town meeting, and it would be after the town meeting has spent two, possibly three nights going over the expenses for this and, you know, capital budgets for that. And I think that if you're getting people on the fourth and fifth night of town meeting bringing these, you know, this table in and stuff like that, either you're going to get no, or you're going to have, what I'm afraid of is that people are going to vote down stuff, and you're going to have to wait to bring it, and they might have voted for it if you wait until September.
And historically, they always waited on these until September. They never did them during the financial May meeting.
Yes, that's, that's, that was my experience at the time, but, but this is just a lot of stuff.
Right.
And, you know, people are just going to be overwhelmed by it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has any questions, comments, concerns?
Can I say one, a few more things, Madam Chair?
Of course.
So, by consolidating this table, this is the table that is up on the town meeting website, by consolidating this table, I'm trying to concentrate what I, what you guys are actually voting on. So that the major changes of the use table are here. So the consolidated uses, you know, is that okay with you? The, in the principal, the yes, no's and special permits that are in blue on this table, do you agree with them in the districts that they are in? And so that's kind of what I, what, that's a land use question, right? So that, you know, I was, I was at Ways and Means, I was unable to go to the Land Use Committee last night to kind of, to really discuss this.
Right, it took us two hours without having you there to interact with us. So it would take us four hours or six hours if you would have been there too.
I hope not. I hope I would have been able to answer questions, but, you know, I know, I'm just shooting the messenger. But, so, you know, I'm definitely looking forward to the, to the meeting minutes from that, so I can get feedback, but these are the substantive changes that are happening in the table. You know, does anybody disagree with any of the new uses that are being added? So those are the highlighted blue. Does anybody disagree with how those new uses are going to be permitted? In what district? Does anybody disagree with what is being consolidated? Those are the substantive changes of this bylaw, and that's what's here.
Got it. Okay, go ahead.
A question.
Yes.
Only because I'm remembering from when we had that big event over there. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe right now, we don't have the ability for a brewery, distillery, cidery, whatever, to come into town.
Correct.
With this, one can.
Yes.
When we pass this, and.
Yes.
There is a Burlington resident interested in opening a brewery or operating a brewery in town, correct?
That is what I've heard.
So if we don't take this to May and don't pass it, this person's plans would then have to be delayed.
Correct.
That would be correct.
I hear what you're saying, I mean, I hear what everybody's saying. I don't know that we necessarily do think for one person.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not saying we should.
And don't get me wrong, a brewery would be delightful, I mean, many new business in the community and bringing in tax dollars and helping, you know.
And I'm not saying we should, I just want the public to understand that, yes, we're consolidating, we're updating the table, there are some small things in here that are allowing for additional uses that weren't prior to be allowed.
Understood. Sherry?
Question.
Sure.
I think to your point, and, oh, Sherry Ellis.
That's fine.
Sorry. A fully complete what will be changed? Is that what will be the warrant article, and then the backup will be the red line?
This has been my problem the whole time with bringing this, is how to present it. What needs to be in the warrant article is all the changes, according to town council. What needs to be in the warrant article is all the changes that are being made. The red line needs to be in the warrant.
So therefore, what you've left out here will also have to be in the warrant, what you're saying?
Yes, it will be.
So the entire table.
Yes.
Will be in the warrant.
But I've consolidated for ease of use for the land use committees, so that we can really just concentrate and not cross our eyes, because there's 18 pages of this. These are the really, these are the things that we need review over. I, I'm comfortable with all of them. Melissa's comfortable with all of them, we've gone through them. The, the, the chamber has reviewed this, they have no notes on this, they're very, they're comfortable with this. You know, this, but, you know, in the land use committees, planning boards, E D R C, land use, are you comfortable with these changes being made to, to?
Madam Chair, so what I would do, because we haven't, as a board, and it looks like Land U has, we haven't gone through each one of these, line by line, right, which I think as a board, we should.
Didn't we?
Right?
We did a similar exercise.
Every single one, we've gone, here's a new one, you know, everyone said yes, we've checked off, everyone's okay with it, right? I don't remember doing that, I might not have been here for that meeting, but I think that's what we got to do. that's what we got to do.
Okay, so I think the action item is, let's send this out, let's send that out. And the revised version and then the red line. Kind of a potential of what you plan on presenting, right? From there, we can review it. If we have any questions, we're going to come back next week. And then from there, we're good. Monty, do you have anything new to add?
Yeah, the new thing is, is that I just learned for the first time that we have added a brewery.
So what did you review last night?
I didn't hear anything about a brewery.
It's been, it's been in there since, since February, since actually October.
Yeah. So I think that's to my point, is to say, if you go line by line, then you spent two hours on it, we haven't ever.
But I've been told that this was only a matter of changing and grouping things, not adding new stuff.
Yeah, whole stuff.
There's a whole.
Whole bunch of new things also.
Okay, so I think that we need to do some more homework here, folks.
Okay, so the thing is, is that if I'm a town meeting member and I'm not on the land use committee or the planning board, you're telling me that there are a whole bunch of new uses like a brewery. Now, I'm fine with a brewery, but there may be people in town meeting who are not fine with a brewery being in town and we better be sure that they know that those various things are added in this because if we add a brewery in the land use thing and people don't know that and a brewery shows up and everybody says, oh, well you passed that, we're going to have another Chuck E. Cheese. We'll have another Chuck E. Cheese.
Monty, I think that's, as a former town meeting member, that's what, that's what reading the warrant articles are about. You get a warrant article, you read it, you do your homework, you have any questions, you ask the questions and you move on.
And you come to grief if you go into town meeting with that, that approach because there are a lot of people who won't do that and so.
That's what they're elected to do.
They're going to vote no.
That's what they're elected to do. They're elected to read the warrant article, ask questions and vote.
That's what they signed up for.
Presentation, right?
Oh, yeah.
I know.
She's going to have a presentation, she's, she can talk about it.
Yeah, I, if that wasn't clear, Monty, I definitely, I'm sorry, I feel like it has been, I feel like it has, I'm sorry if it doesn't.
Okay.
But I think all these uses are exciting. I want to say, I think all these new uses are really great for the tax space of the town.
All I've seen is what's embedded in charts that, you know, make my eyes cross and I haven't seen anything.
So we have three folks, or two folks online, let's get those comments and then move along. Barbara?
I just am not sure what Bill was saying and so I may have misunderstood him. I think what we need to do is, I've been going through this for months with Liz, so I'm quite familiar, but I think every planning board member needs to take this back, go through it line by line, send any questions or concerns that you need to with staff. I don't think we can go through this line by line together at a meeting, that would just take way too long. But we, this has not changed significantly from what we've seen for the past couple of months. Now is the final time for us to make those, those, you know, go through it with a fine tooth comb and send any questions or comments to staff and then vote on it in the next meeting. I can't see us going through this together live at a meeting.
Thank you.
Has her hand raised, I'm going to send, there you go, Melissa.
Melissa?
That helps, I'm here. Well, I just wanted to add, from Melissa, Economic Development Director, I just wanted to add, since this is a joint meeting, that maybe a parallel is Ways and Means, how do you think about this? Because there are a lot of details and town meeting will trust the, you know, or will look to your guidance as planning board, land use committee.
Can I stop you for a second?
Yes.
Melissa, you paused so we didn't hear a portion of what you said, so if you could please start over.
Okay, sorry about that. I'm going to stop the video, just maybe that will help.
That's fine, thank you.
I just wanted to add that how I see this a little bit might be like Ways and Means, they go through, you know, multimillion dollar budget in much detail and town meeting, you know, has a chance to review it obviously, but they're trusting the Ways and Means committee. So a lot of people will be looking to planning board and land use committee, ZBRC, to make sure that they've gone into the details. And I look, and I'm thinking about this, also thinking about the mixed use zoning that we've been working on. It requires a lot of attention to the detail, but it, you know, I think town meeting will be looking to your, you know, examination of this. So I think that's why it's important to review it. And I think one thing I'd like to add, Liz, is that Amy had an idea of how to lay this out a little bit, too, that might be clearer and just to lay it as a, the revised version without a lot of color, but just so it can read easier. And I don't know if that would be helpful, so people can have the old version and then the new version.
Great.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Melissa, we can definitely, let's, let's follow up on that.
Edward Parsons, I'm going to send you a request on mute right now.
Your hand has been raised.
Thank you. I am at this point just amplifying the last two comments, but I will say that it, the arguments that this was big and hard and would take some work were exactly the reasons why we pushed and put this off after the January meeting. But this has been in the works for a long time and it is big and hard and important. And town meeting looks to ZBRC and land use to advise them. And that's why I would advise us to just put in the work over the next month, review it very carefully and give a strong, detailed and clear advocacy of it and just get it done.
Thank you, Ed, well said.
Thank you. Have a motion, please.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Did you have something new that you wanted to add?
I did. For people who are listening to this, this is zoning and it doesn't say that somebody can come in and open up a brewery. What it does is set the table for opportunities and then it still goes through the entire process. So zoning is only setting the table, it doesn't make anything specific happen and I think people get confused about that. This is, I would like to see if people are really concerned, I would like to see us have a joint working meeting just for this, where we roll up our sleeves and go over the piece one by one. So that's, that's one option. The other is that we revise things all the time, so whatever we come up with may end up going through some other fine tuning down the road, there's opportunity for that. But I think Mr. Parsons is correct, that this has been a huge undertaking and finding, my question, I guess, how can we move forward on this in a way that is in the best interest of the people who have input on these committees?
Thank you.
A lot of work has gone into this, I hate to see it go down the tubes. Typically, if people are confused, they vote no. And I think we'd want to avoid that. So there's two things I'm thinking of. If some teaching sessions could be set up prior and town meeting members invited to come, it's designed specifically for them rather than the full general public, maybe that will get some people to come and the others who don't show will follow the people who took the information. The second thing is, if in the warrant council requires to show the red lines, if you have that and then at the end, this is what it's going to be unabridged at the final form. So then they can say, you can say, this is what it's going to be, you really don't have to look at the red lines. Maybe that's a little easier for them to swallow.
Thank you for the recommendation.
You want to get it done, it's been a long time.
Well, they can actually be the backup. I mean, they, you know, it can be reversed, you know, the final product can be the backup material and the red line can be there.
Continue.
All right. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this matter to the planning board meeting of March 21st, 2024.
Second.
Sharon Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Does that conclude this section?
So 2:45, yes.
Ooh, yeah.
Okay. This does conclude the joint meeting of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee. From here, we'll begin our regularly scheduled planning board meeting. May I have a motion, please?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the joint meeting of the Planning Board, Land Use Committee and the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Sherry, did you have something you wanted to add?
Can I just make a comment that the zoning bylaw review committee is meeting next Wednesday night, we will be continuing discussions on all of these, so I just wanted to make that.
Great.
That's also the MBTA session next Wednesday, so we will not be present.
Well, so you won't be there?
No.
Okay, so it's been the second Wednesday of every month since 2018, but anyway.
Okay.
Got it. I thank you everybody for your patience and like I said, if you have any questions, reach out to staff or board members. May I have, may I have a motion?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to call to order this meeting of the planning board.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on an item that is not currently on our agenda?
Yes.
Yes, I think, well, I guess they left. I was looking to see if we could speak to the joint boards before everyone kind of left, only because I am looking kind of at the, kind of ahead beyond May Town Meeting and I'm trying to understand how to best get these boards together to talk about the mixed use zoning, if it's going to be as, you know, more detailed than you're even seeing now with the use table. So we've been having meetings with property owners in the advisory group, which just has been part of the, if there's any advice or recommendations.
Yeah, I would say reach out to the chairs of each board because everybody is gone, so I don't know that this is a time that we can coordinate calendars.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
You don't want to talk to us?
Not everybody's here, so she wants to know.
She wants to get everybody together and I advised her to reach out to the chairs of the respective boards. Thank you. Staff, let's move on to announcements, please.
Yeah, so as Liz just mentioned, next Wednesday night at Grandview, from 6:00 to 8:00, there's going to be a information session that is open to all, that this is going to be an in-person meeting only and there will be refreshments that are going to be served and this is going to be continuing the discussion, presentation, materials that were talked about tonight, so that kind of continuing on what was being said. So there's, that's going to be next Wednesday from 6:00 to 8:00 at Grandview. The Sculpture Park Committee will be.
Is it in here, it's 5:00 to 7:00? Is it 6:00 to 8:00 or 5:00 to 7:00?
I would prefer, see, it would be, let's see if our consultants can do 5:00 to 7:00 because that way I can go to ZBRC.
Okay. We will double check that and get the correct information on that.
I think you're going to get more people that's going to go at 6:00 to 8:00 or at least 5:30 if people work until 5:00. I think, you know, this is for the community and I think that you should be a little bit later.
Okay, we will reach out and provide an update as soon as we can on that.
Thank you.
The Sculpture Park Committee will be meeting next Wednesday, March 20th, at 8:00 AM and that will be online via WebEx. The Burlington Town Election is coming up, that's going to be April 6th. And just two deadlines to keep in mind is that March 27th is the last day to register to vote and April 1st is the last day to request to vote by mail ballot. And then, as was discussed many times tonight, the May Town Meeting will be May 13th and that's at 7:00 PM at the Burlington High School Auditorium.
Thank you. There are no legal notices, not approvals, so we'll move on to Item A, is an application for endorsement of a plan believed not to require approval. 5 Francis Wyman Road, SJ Peacock Builders, Inc. is the applicant.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Robert Buckley, Raymond Bronstein, I'm pitch hitting for Christine Huggs in my office. I was going to be here anyhow. I have Scott Peacock. This is a lot on 5 Francis Wyman Road. It is the subject of a variance, one portion of it, which is under appeal, so that's a non-buildable lot. So what we're doing is, is doing an A and R plan to create the one lot that complies with zoning and the other one is labeled as non-buildable. If it is resolved in the applicant's favor, we'll be back to change that. If not, it stays non-buildable.
Staff, do you have anything you would like to add?
So, you know, my initial feeling was uncomfortable because this was going under, this was, this was being appealed in court. The applicant did come back and revise the A and R to make it so that the lot that is currently under, under 20,000 square feet is labeled on the A and R that is a non-buildable lot. So that will go to the registry and it will say, this is a non-buildable lot and whatever happens with the appeal of the ZBA happens. But, you know, it is up to you guys as to whether or not it's something that you want to endorse or take no action on.
So the plan will be, that's before us, has a buildable lot and a non-buildable?
Yep, so on the screen, you can see here that.
It would be, I'm going to be able to get a building permit.
That what's outlined here in the yellow is Lot 1A and that's, and it says here, not a buildable lot. And then the outline in red, Lot 2A, which meets the 20,000 square feet, that is a buildable lot. And they both do have over 100 feet of frontage on Francis Wyman Road. I'll step around in case you guys had any questions about the variance.
Thank you. I mean, if they can't build it, I don't think it really makes it.
I just want to.
I mean, it's fully compliant, this lot's fully compliant.
It's compliant, but you've got a little bit of that existing house.
That's coming down.
That's coming down, says to be removed. So with this approved, that we approved today, is the, is there a condition that that, that it be removed?
Madam Chair, can I comment? It's actually, I believe it's been condemned, right?
It is condemned. It is falling down.
Why do you talk about now?
I can pull it up for, for those who want to view it.
Everybody's aware of what house it is.
Right before you hit Cambridge Street on the right inside, it's up a little bit, right on Cambridge Street, before you hit Cambridge Street on Francis Wyman Road.
Red pile of wood.
With all the X's on it, so, yeah.
We could take it down, we just can't put anything up yet.
Yeah, good, thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I think that that's a blessing to the community.
Good question. Have you heard anything from the neighboring property owners?
To my knowledge, our department has not.
Was this, were they notified that this was being presented this evening? This was advertised.
The administrative act.
It doesn't need, it doesn't need to, it's a build of.
It's a reality.
You know, what, it doesn't have to, should we? Best practices, I think, yes, but I've got to ask a question.
So our department does not advertise A and Rs because it is not a requirement of the, of the subdivision control law.
I mean, well, it's not even.
Right, it will be, yeah.
So why would they have to?
If we don't act it will be, it'll be 20 days appealed.
Yeah.
We heard from the neighbors at the variance and it was all explained with this plan, so.
And they were okay?
They were okay, but the appeal really stems from one of the neighbors being mad that they weren't able to get money for their lot.
Understood.
That's where the appeal is coming from, long and short.
I really would not want to discuss the variance of any appeal.
Oh, no, and that's, we don't need to discuss it. Yeah, may I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make.
Oh, I'm sorry, Barbara, did you have anything else you wanted to add?
No, no, thank you.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take no action on the approval.
We can, we can. Move to the next one, yeah.
I'd like to, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the approval not required plan entitled Plan of Land Located in Burlington, S. U. S. Francis Wyman Road, prepared by Dresser Williams &amp; Way, dated February 7th, 2024 and revised to February 21st, 2024, reflecting the modification of a lot line between assessors map 10 parcel 78-0, 5 Francis Wyman Road and assessors map 10 parcel 78-1.
Can I add a second, a second phrase to that?
As modified.
That this is a, that this is an acceptable A and R plan, that this is, this is a.
And that this is an acceptable A and R plan.
Something to that.
Something to that nature.
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you. You done?
Not yet.
No.
We're getting there.
Wait, there's more.
I thought we were going to be here till midnight, to be honest with you, so I'm rocking and rolling here, folks.
It's like, it's an old-school planning board meeting, guys.
You know what?
Jack knows.
Have a good night. You know, we're going, we're being efficient, as long as we're getting it done.
Yep.
Item As, discussion, request for approval of a minor engineering change 207 Cambridge Street, Swift River Properties is the applicant, Fred Russell.
Yep, I just sent, the, the engineer, Fred Russell, has been online. I just sent you a request on mute, and I'm pulling up the, the plan right now. Give me one moment.
So staff, why don't you talk about, he's pulling that up?
Sure, so this is for the property 207 Cambridge Street. It is where the, the O'Reilly Auto Parts is proposed to go. Mr. Russell is, is working on behalf of the property owner, because the, the MassDOT has asked that they reduce the size of their curb cut, and so they had to come for a minor engineering change for that. But then also, they are also proposing to relocate their dumpster enclosure to make the site work more efficiently, but I will let Fred Russell kind of go into more details.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Good evening, board members. So my name is Fred Russell, the engineer for the project that, I think we received approval back in November or December of 2021. And when we had gone for, or submitted approval from MassDOT to do the alterations of the curb cut, they basically sent it back with some comments, and as, as described, they wanted us to reduce the curb cut even more than what we were proposing. I think we were proposing it down to 30 feet. They asked if we could get on the, basically said we had to get on to 24 feet, which we're showing here. And then also, if you look to the, to the, to the right of the curb cut, there are two, some lantern lights, posts, light posts, and also some Cleveland pear trees. We had originally showed them within the right-of-way between the back of concrete sidewalk and the, and the right-of-way line. They would not allow that. They don't want to have any sort of plantings or, or landscape features in the right-of-way, so we actually slid them back a little bit onto private property. So they'll be on this, the applicant's property, but we are maintaining, as required by the board, the, the trees and the lanterns. And that was basically it, the, the changes that were required by MassDOT.
Great, thank you. Does any of the board members have any questions?
Yep. So it looks like, so the green space that exists, if you look at your new curb, your curb cut, the green space that exists on the right, the curb, the curb cut on the right side, nothing is going, how, when you're reducing it, how is it getting reduced? How much on each side and how, you know?
Okay, so I'm not sure I understand the question, but you can see the, the green that shows, that is actually part of the plan for approval.
Right.
Some existing asphalt and partying making a green space.
Yep.
So that, that hasn't changed from the original approval.
Right, so the green exists. You're saying...
And you're squeezing the...
Are you adding more green to, to give the extra six feet?
Yeah, what, what's that? So kind of where you see the, the, if you can see it, R15, this is radius 15 curving there.
Yeah.
That, put a little nub, was extended over when we, when we reduced the, the opening from 30 to 24 feet.
Yeah, now there's...
So those, so those two R15s did not exist? You're adding curb to those areas? How was that?
No, so we had, we had proposed like a tighter radius. That's, that means radius, 15-foot radius. That's what the, the, the MassDOT requires. We actually had a smaller radius coming in, and we had to widen those out as well. So they, they had, they actually had me lay over a, a training template for a fire truck just to make sure that a fire truck could access the site, which I had provided to them. And this is what was, was approved by MassDOT.
Is this, is this something that Mass, the DOT is going all up down Cambridge Street for just this fair?
I believe so. In, in, in some of the other projects, I've been involved on Cambridge Street through the, the MassDOT section, they are looking at requiring the curb cuts to meet their, their current standards.
Okay. I'm talking on the beginning.
Okay. Is there anything else?
Just, just with regard to the, this, I recall that, I think, number Pepper asked for the site next over, we talked about this originally, is it take down that chain link fence to the left?
And it's still up. I noticed that a couple of days ago.
It's still up. Again, it's not, the purview is not to here, but it's actually that building that you can see up on the upper left. So maybe as a side shot, you can follow up. I know that the owner is in California, isn't she? She's not local, but she agreed to that, so I wonder if we can...
It's actually on Terry Ave.
Right.
So if you get on Terry Ave, it's the first, it's the chain link on the right-hand side, just as you enter Terry Ave.
Right.
It's preventing people from parking in the back and, and walking around to the front, so it's creating a parking issue and, and, and actually a flow issue, right?
It's the same owner, so I thought maybe it's a good time to re-mention that to the, maybe to the person that's on the phone, or if we go back to the, the records, that she did agree to, to do that, if you could call.
That's right.
Follow up the owner or this person here to take down that fence?
And if they wanted to do it, you know, some sort of rod iron and put a gate there so people can walk through, that's not, you know, if they want to cut it off somehow with trees, so people aren't driving back and forth, but it, it needs to be open. They were going to remove the chain link and then make an opening, at least a gate or tree, so that, you know, walkway, so that people can park in the back area and not be squeezed into parking in the front and create... Is that, that front area is a type, is not as good a parking situation?
Wasn't that part of the previous decision?
It was, so we were talking about the, the autopilot store, but in that conversation, we had the owner here from California and...
Said she was going to do it, yeah.
Okay, so it's, that's, per staff, it's not what's, what's before us, but if staff, if you could reach out to them and find out what their timeline is and circle back...
That'd be perfect.
That would be great, because there was, I mean, if for some reason our applicants aren't doing things, then maybe we need to put time limits on when they have to do them. Is there anything else regarding this matter?
No.
Okay. Motion?
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to approve the request of Swift River Properties, property owner, for approval of a minor engineering change for property located 207 Cambridge Street. Premises to allow for the reduction of an existing curb cut, opening from 68 feet to 24 feet is required by MassDOT, and additional site improvements is reflected on the red line site plan entitled proposed site plan, 207 Cambridge Street in Burlington, Massachusetts, prepared by Frederick Russell, dated August 3rd, 2023, consisting of one sheet site plan subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions as noted.
Second.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Impamba. Kavina. Gaffney.
Yes.
Um, Natola.
Yes.
Uh, LaRue.
You forgot.
Yes.
Impamba.
Oh, you said it. Oh, you already called me. Yeah, you already said yes.
It's been a long night.
Remember Gaffney, do you?
Gaffney said it. I do, yes.
Excellent. He seconded, so I figured.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Have a good evening. Thank you. Has, has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes for February 15th?
I was not here, I was sick.
Same, so I will have to abstain. All right, so we have four. Do we, is that fine?
That's fine. Take what I need.
All right, did make the, the one update that you, that you had emailed me about, so that's in there.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2024, as amended.
Yes.
Second.
Uh, Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Abstain.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Abstain.
LaRue.
Yes.
402.
402.
Okay.
And passes.
So, um, 43 South Avenue is looking for an extension of time. Why?
So 43 South Avenue, that is a property that Scott Weiss of the Gutierrez Company has permitted. It is the, it's currently unbuilt. It's the property next to Kirin, down in the back, where they have like their basketball court. And they, they had previously pre-permitted an office for that site many years ago. Joe, you probably remember. And then they recently came back to us to kind of be able to re, to re-advertise it as a life science building. And so this is a continued some time to keep those plans viable, in case they would like to, you know, go move forward with it. But it's a plan that's been vetted by the planning board. I don't see it happening anytime soon, but they want to keep the work that they've done, you know, still current, that, that it's, it's still viable.
Sure.
And so that is what this will do.
Okay, so it's pretty straightforward. Does anyone have any objections of this? May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion for the planning board to hereby grant a two-year extension of time from April 14th, 2024 to April 14th, 2026, to complete the required special permit improvements at 43 South Avenue, as requested by the applicant and emailed dated February 23rd, 2024.
Second.
Uh, Rappaport.
Yes.
Sutherland.
Yes.
Gaffney.
Yes.
Impamba.
Yes.
Natola.
Yes.
LaRue.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Motion passes.
So has everybody had an opportunity to review the planning department budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Is everyone okay with it?